Good evening and welcome to the September 9th meeting of the Milton Select Board. Please join me as I stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Coming up, we have public comment. Each speaker is asked to keep their remarks to three minutes or shorter, which I will give a 30-second warning when you're approaching that time. And we have a total of 30 minutes, or sorry, 20, 21 minutes available, which Mr. Milano will keep track of. I know that we have two names on the list, and I do see two hands up. So why don't we do the two in the room and then we'll do the two online? I'm not sure who put their name down first, but I think it was for Pope's Pond. Yes, please come forward and give us your name and address, and I'll start your time when you start speaking.
My name is Jackie Golden of 20 Kevin Road. I'm here to speak in support of the transfer of a portion of the Pope's Pond parcel to Parks and Recreation Agenda Item Number 12. Again, my name is Jackie Golden, co-founder of the Beverly Playground Planners. To give a little background, I've been working with the town since 2020 to develop a new playground structure at the existing Beverly Park. Since then, we've raised $500,000, which is over 80% of the total project cost. Funding sources include local foundations, in-kind donations of construction materials, and new trees. And then we've been awarded three funding cycles from the CPC. I want to highlight a few equity and access pieces of this project. This would be the first playground west of Blue Hill Parkway. Currently, all five town-operated playgrounds are located within northeastern third of the town, so more towards the East Milton. This is not just a convenience issue. It addresses visible equity and equality gap for children in the western part of town. There is no playground within safe walking or biking distance west of the parkway. Currently, families have to travel to either end of the parkway to safely cross. And the closest playground is Kelly Field. In my opinion, currently, the use is very underutilized. I live two streets away, and you see the occasional trail walkers coming in, coming in and out of the opening of the trail around the pond. You see small groups playing soccer, individuals playing with their dogs. It is not really a community gathering place at the moment. It's not really activated. But the proposed playground impact is huge. It would only occupy a third of the parcel, so it is preserving space for those existing activities to still continue, relative in size to Shields Park. And then proposing same-looking feel as other town
30 seconds.
playgrounds in Milton for a cohesive look. We've been working with conservation since 2020 to ensure we're in compliance with environmental requirements and maintaining distance from the brook to avoid disruption. So just in my opinion, this project has tremendous positive impact to the town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just before she leaves.
Yeah.
Could you email, could you email that as well? Was that like a presentation or was that just your notes you were reading up?
Just my notes.
Okay.
All right. I believe we have one more signed up in person.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Helen Russell, and I live at 190 Central Ave. in Milton. And I'm here to advocate for the trees across the street. I know that there's a discussion about clearcutting that lot to create more parking for the library. And it's ironic that it's right, right in front of that lot is the sign that says Milton is a Tree City. I understand, and I'm really pleased that the library is getting popular and that parking is important, and it must be safe. And I don't know what other proposals you have in mind, but I think in some ways, it seems like the easiest thing to do is to take those trees down and put a parking lot in. But I think, given the complexity of the traffic situation in Milton, it would actually maybe be worth considering a more detailed plan where parking would be made available here. And there's an opportunity to create a safe and traffic-calming crosswalk in front of the Town Hall. So I'm here, I don't have a whole lot of information about what the plan is, but I received a late notice, and I just hate to see more trees cut down because replacement trees are just not the same as a 30, or 40, or 50-year-old tree. We see a lot of paper birches around town, and they just, I think they detract from the character of the town of Milton, and they should be considered treasured resources. And I think you're approving me for the Shade Tree Committee, too.
Wonderful.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no more folks here, we're going to go online. Our esteemed former colleague Roxanne Musto has her hand up. You could go to Roxanne, or... Did you see that?
Hi, this is, I don't know if Roxanne's on here. Is she on here? Because this is Mary Stenson.
Yeah, well, I thought that we were promoting Ms. Musto, but we can go with you first, Ms. Stenson.
Okay. I agree with the last speaker. I just wanted to say that I oppose the suggestion of the new parking lot.
I'm sorry, could you just quickly identify yourself and give us your address?
Oh, sorry, I thought I said my name, Mary Stenson, and I live at 91 Sias Lane.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also oppose the suggestion of a new parking lot. I mean, I love the, it's such a wonderful helm up there at the library, but I, over the years, have witnessed many accidents up and around that location. So I'm hoping that they consider the safety in the traffic reports and the different things that have gone on at that intersection. And then, secondly, the preservation of the trees. And third, or not even in that order, the historic nature of that area, that, you know, we're going to be doing, making a lot of changes in town, and some of the charming little niches of the town need to continue. And naturally, the library needs to thrive, but it is dangerous up there. So I hope, considering all those, I hope they do their research and involve all the necessary parties in making a decision about what they are proposing. And that's it. So I do oppose.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's try, it does look like Ms. Musto's got her hand up.
Thought I had, sorry.
That's all right.
Okay, thank you, Roxanne Musto, 101 Milton Street, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5. I'm here to speak tonight about the Governor Stoughton trust item concerning the affordable housing proposal. As a former Select Board member, I was also a member of the Town Farm Subcommittee. The objective was to explore all possibilities for the town farm that would meet the tenants' of the will. The Governor Stoughton will said that it's for the benefits of the poor of the town of Milton, and that that interest generated from the trust is used to fund assistance to those in need through the Milton Food Pantry, Milton Residents Fund. Many residents of all ages are benefiting from the fund. We should be considering the fact that there was never any attempt to broaden the RFP process to include all possibilities for the land. Food insecurity is the number-one identified concern in Milton. The housing proposal before you takes $500,000 from the CPC, which is our Milton Residents taxpayer money, and gives it to a private developer. For those at home, that's the charge that is assessed on your tax bill, designated exclusively for the CPC. That developer, in turn, is paying nothing for land acquisition fees and is going to build 35 units of affordable housing. And that housing does not exclusively go to Milton residents. The maximum amount of units for Milton residents is 70% of these units. What does the trust get in return for giving this deal to a developer, a private developer? We get $10,000 a year for 50 years. That is a sweet deal. Do you know how many developers would love that kind of sweet deal? Free land, a half a million taxpayer funds, and the rent from the units, all benefiting a private developer, not the trust. The trust should take the lead on developing the housing necessary for Milton residents, and all the rental money would keep the trust funded for years to come. We could also include farming as well and the restoration of the existing buildings on the land. The current trustees are selling the Milton residents short. We need to ensure that the trust continues to be able to help many people that need it. We should look at all possibilities. And a few final questions that I hope can be clarified tonight, is I'd like to know who pays for any legal fees related to litigation with the trust? Who pays for infrastructure for sewer, roads, lighting along Governor Stoughton Way that need to be done for a development? And can you also clarify for the residents? Does the town of Milton own this land, or does the Governor Stoughton Trust own the land? That seems to be a common question many people ask. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. We have two more hands up. I see a Kay Ramandi. How are we doing on our overall time?
Excuse me, 12 minutes.
12 minutes, okay, great. Let's promote. Hi, if you could take yourself off of mute and introduce yourself and give us your address, please. Can you hear us? Okay, I see the name K.R.A.M.O.N.D.I. There's a person on Zoom, Kay Ramandi, maybe?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, Kristen Ramandi, 23 Harold Street in Milton. And I agree completely with everything the prior speaker just said. I received this notice late. I don't have anything prepared, but the impacts on the town, that land seems, I have walked up there. You know, the environmental impact, I don't know if any studies have been done or if anything, you know, it just seems like we're giving it away. Just, and the traffic impact on the area is substantial. It just seems that no thought really went into this plan. I completely agree with everything the prior speaker said. I wish I had, you know, something prepared, but I just wanted to jump on the call to say I'm completely opposed to kind of what has been presented.
We've had a couple of speakers talking about a couple of land use issues. Could you just let us know which land use issue you're talking about?
Yes, it is the Governor Stoughton Trust for remaining acres on the Milton Historic Town Farm.
Thank you. Did you have anything else to say? I'm sorry to interrupt. Do you have another?
No, I wish I had something prepared. I just, I completely agree with everything the prior speaker said.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I hope those questions can be answered.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And then we do have Fred with his hand up. Fred, if you could take yourself off of mute, introduce yourself and your address, and your time will start when you start speaking.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is Fred Monroe. I live on 11 Academy Lane, which is right across the street from the library. And I wanted to express my opposition to any additional parking for the library, which I believe is already congested enough. And any additional parking would also contribute to excessive light pollution, which is already a factor on Academy Lane. So I am opposed to any additional construction. Want to make my views known here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see anyone else with their, Fred, you can lower your hand. Oh, there you go. I don't see anyone else online, anyone else in person that wishes to speak? Okay, that will conclude then our Citizen Speak Comment, or Public Speak Comment. Our next item, item number four, is library parking and use of land on Canton Ave. And I believe we have a couple of folks here, trustees of the library and a librarian to present some ideas. Oh, good, and we have Will online, too. All right. The floor is over to the trustees and the Librarians.
Thank you. Thanks for having us tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to talk a little about the work we've been doing as related to parking needs for the Milton Public Library. I am Will Adamsick. I'm your library director. I'm joined online by Christine Hodlin, who is the Chair of the Trustees Building and Grounds Committee. I'm joined by Jim Potter, our Chair of the Library Trustees, and Cheryl Taggias, who is a member of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. We're going to run through the work we've done since we last visited the Select Board about a year ago, and we have some recommendations for the board. So the library has needed parking, additional parking, since we opened in 2009 with our expanded library services. The library trustees began actually exploring new options in 2015. So this has been a process that's been going on for almost 10 years now. The town center has changed in recent years, and there's been an additional need for both staff and resident parking, both here at Town Hall and at the library. So both sides of Canton Ave are seeing congestion. The library trustees have worked with the town and the Master Planning Implementation Committee to research many options for parking all throughout this part of Milton. We've looked at different locations. We've looked at different building types. We've tried to consider all options for this. Original options were presented to the Select Board in March of 2024, where we received support to further research the development on Canton Ave. Why does the library need parking? There's a number of reasons. The best reason for me to talk about is we're very busy. We don't have enough seats in the library after school for the students. We don't have enough parking spaces for their parents when they pick them up. But there's four major concerns. Safety, we've had safety concerns with library parking since the addition in 2009. Jim will talk a little bit about that. And there've been improvements to that. Capacity inconvenience, access to the library is challenging certain and many times of day and many days of the week. When we've looked at parking options, depending on distance from the building, we have slopes to deal with, we have potential fall weather. And a lot of the places, a lot of the people parking are going to be our seniors and our families with strollers and whatnot. Growth, which is what I alluded to at first. Programming has grown over the years. It's grown excessively since 2009. Room use by community groups and by library programs has grown, and we're limited in any additional things that we could provide for the town. And green, we know, we don't have any EV stations at the library for parking right now, so this would be an opportunity to introduce EV charging stations, both in the current parking lot and in any additional parking lot. So, did I skip? No.
Thank you, Will. If you could turn the mic to general.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Will. As Will previously mentioned, there, in the past, there were some safety concerns with the parking lot. So based on consultation with the Traffic Commission, the library reversed the direction of the traffic flow into the parking lot. At that same time, the library created a turnaround within the current lot. So if you're already in the parking lot, you didn't find a parking, you did not have to go back out on the Canton. You could turn right around. And the library has also worked with the Traffic Commission to add additional spaces right there on Canton Avenue. Thank you. Over the past several years, the trustees have outreach to various organizations within the town. We've worked with town planners and engineers. We've worked with the Conservation Committee, the Traffic Commission, the Master Plan Implementation Committee, the Select Board at various times, BID Milton Hospital, the United Congressional Church, the Center School, the First Parish Church, in a town-wide forum that I believe was held by the trustees last year. Recently, over the last two years, the trustees have been working very closely with the NPIC to do a park and study that was undertaken with the Planning Department. Engineering work, including site plans and models, were done. We basically have done a very exhaustive search for all possible locations and have concluded that the Canton Avenue is the only location that meets the library needs. And I'll turn it over to Cheryl.
Thank you, Jim. The Master Plan Implementation Committee was asked to assist the library because one of the recommendations in the 2015 master plan was to work with the library to help solve their parking needs. It was identified then and has only increased that the library serves as a community center. It's one of the highest-utilized public assets that we have in town. And it's a shame that not all people who desire to take advantage of the programming that's available there is available to them. So Will and Jim mentioned various locations that were studied, parking utilization studies, what's the busiest time of day? When is the greatest need for this parking? Whether there's any other options for it. The committee and the library representatives spent two years working on this. And some of you who were on the board know that we did come with an update to you, and as Will said, were encouraged to continue to pursue options. We also, at that time, discussed how would this be funded, if this did go forward? And how would this, whether it's a parking alone or parking with another structure, be funded? And so we did a little bit of research. We did some outreach to the private sector and the public sector to see what kind of grant funding might be available for infrastructure projects, parking being infrastructure for the library, and also what might be available in the private-public-private partnership. Public-private partnerships, we've discovered, are being utilized in other communities. In fact, it was just announced this week that there's a new library being built in the city of Boston in the Chinatown neighborhood in conjunction with affordable housing. These kinds of partnerships are happening across the country, and it's, we think, a good opportunity for Milton to look into that for this particular site. We also, in the committee, discussed that it's perhaps not the best use of limited-town land to do parking only, that we could look at what other uses could be combined with the parking to provide additional benefit to the town, whether that be affordable housing, municipal space, if that's needed, or other commercial space such as cafe, office, medical office, et cetera. So we, in looking at this, parking-only, parking-with-structure, and parking-with-housing, came to, I'm going to go to the next slide, this location on Canton Ave that you can see on the screen. This footprint is about the footprint that would allow for up to 70 parking spaces, and that would be with two levels of parking. This site has topographic change, so two levels would take advantage of that topographic change. Those rectangles going towards the street would be access, and then the footprint of the parking and the structure above it would be that larger rectangle. The, if this were just parking, it could be done in a single level, probably about 40 spaces. This slide shows some numbers. This has been a moving target with its size of the footprint. This is something that would get evaluated in the next phase. And so the next phase, I think, is something that Jim's going to talk about, and I'll pass it over to him now.
Before we leave the slide, real quick, just a question. The numbers that are there, those are the current parking spaces?
The, only the 58 and the 67, and the 24 are the curbside.
24 are the curbside, thank you.
Right.
I figured as much, I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you, Cheryl. At this step, the trustees believe it's time to take the next steps. The trustees are recommending that the Select Board support a feasibility study/RFP for a parking and building solution, funded jointly by both the town and the trustees, in that the Select Board and the trustees form a joint task force to guide the RFP process, to make a formal recommendation to the entire Select Board and the entire library trustees. Potential members could be Nick Connors, Will, the library director, Christine Holland, Cheryl Taggias, a Select Board member, and two residents with real estate experience in planning and experience in architectural. That is the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Questions from the members?
I'm not going first.
I don't want to dominate conversation, but...
Lead the way.
Could you speak a little bit? I'll kick off with one question that I would love for other folks to ask. In terms of impacts on the environment, trees, wetlands, I know that that was a consideration that you looked with, and you'd also worked with the Conservation Committee, so I'm curious to hear what the thoughts were there.
Right. The wetlands were flagged by the Conservation Officer, and those were recorded in a survey. And there's a stream between the police station and Canton Ave, but there's a significant slope change there, too. And so the proximity of a new structure or a new lot, I call it a structure because of the slope. There does have to be some structure. So even if it's just a single level of parking, it requires a little bit of structure. It would be within the 100-foot setback, so Conservation Commission would need to have a role in reviewing it, but it's well outside the 25-foot boundary of the do-not-disturb. There's another part to that question, I believe.
The discussion with the Conservation Committee?
The trees, I think. The other thing is Peter Jackson took a look at the request of Chris Hodlin at the existing trees on the property. Didn't identify for him a concern that a lot of them were of the invasive species type like Norway maple. A, obviously, tree loss of any tree canopy is something that would need to be considered. In my experience as an architect, tree replacement is often looked at as a way to resolve tree loss in one location. That tree replacement can happen in another location. And so that would have to be something that's considered in the feasibility study/RFP process.
Other questions? Mr. Daley?
In terms of the needs at the library, was, in any of the studies that have been done, is there a particular time or time of day? I know after school, there was some need, but those are usually students that are walking, so there's space needed inside the library, but for cars. Is this weekends, is this nights? What is the busy time?
Thanks for that question. There's a number of times throughout the week. We did both with the Planning Department when they did a count, but also when we've done counts at the library. The busiest times are weekday mornings, when there are story hours and children's programs. We often see people circling the lot, parking on the street, getting strollers out on Canton Ave or across the street at the Town Hall. That's a busy time. At drop-off after-school, so like 2:30-ish, is another time where the lot fills up. From 2:30 to 5:30 or 6:00, it's usually full with drop-off, pickup, tutoring, and any number of things. And then on weeknights, depending on what the program or event is going on at the library, it's full, usually the busiest is Monday. It gets less busy as the week goes on. We've had a number of library programs already this year where we've had to make use of the Milton Police Department because we knew we'd have a traffic overflow, and we were concerned about the safety of people, both parking on Canton and crossing Canton Ave. So police details are something that we've had, that we've used to kind of...
So police details are something that we've had, that we've used to kind of mitigate that. But it is, it's story hours in the morning, it's that afternoon school time, and then again in the evenings when we have, if we have, what happens now is we can only offer one program at night, whereas we used to rent a room for maybe the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, whatever, and have a library program simultaneously. The parking lot doesn't allow for both of those at this point because our programming has reached capacity.
And have you determined the number of spots that you think you need? So I thought I saw on the slide, 50 to 60 slots would be accommodated on that site, but is that, you know, is that what you determine that you need or just what is the potential is for the site?
Yeah. It's both. I mean, we were looking at a number of around 50 to 60 spaces that would be a combination of what is needed now and what would be allowed with the growth if we're having two programs at the same time. So we tried to look at a footprint that would accommodate approximately that number of spaces without being too large, you know, going too big.
So obviously, I was intimately involved as Chair of the Traffic Commission in creating the existing, I think we took a tree out, didn't we, to make the turn? Didn't we take a big tree out?
Yeah, there was a tree that was actually taken out beforehand because it was, the tree was dying. And so it was taken out because of safety concerns, yeah.
I do recall that. So number one, I mean, obviously, as Cheryl, Mr. Gaius will know, taking down trees in town is always a huge issue. 130 Elliott, 131 Elliott in that project, probably 15 years ago, one tree created a 10-year delay, and that's how important trees can be. So a couple of things. So first off, Historical Commission, there's that historic powderhouse there. Have you even had conversation with them? Because that would have to be moved. A lot of people don't even realize it's there, but it's there.
That little...
That goes back to like the Suffolk Des Alves times.
Yeah, it's anticipated that that would remain in approximately the same location. It might have to be altered slightly, but this would be set back behind that current location. So it's not right at the sidewalk, it's set in some 15 or 20 feet.
Do you want to put the slide up that had the map on while we're having this discussion? Might be helpful.
Okay, so the...
So you can...
So you're gonna go around at the powder? If I'm correct, the powderhouse sits in front of the largest blue structure there. Am I correct?
Correct. That's right. So the thought was that the, setting the structure back would allow not only the powderhouse to remain, but also trees to remain, and so that you're not looking, going down Canton Ave., what you're viewing is not a parking lot right up against the sidewalk, against the stone wall. So the stone wall would remain as well, except where the openings would have to be made.
And what do you think? I know you have a number in your head. You don't come into these zones without having a number. What do you just ballpark on a single floor, single-story, just parking? What do you think the cost would be?
Looking at about $80,000 a space.
And how many, you say 50? You get 50 on a single? You get 50, okay. And on a two-story, the same?
Two-story, might be slightly more.
So with regard to the two-story, and we've talked about this before when you were here, I know you, are you still thinking like, well, I think this is gonna, this would be a big, heavy lift to do this, but you're thinking like some type of public-private partnership to get the commercial to offset the cost of the parking space?
Correct. Right. And we've had conversations about whether that's doable, and that really is going to take some more investigation. You know, it depends on how much is put here. So if it's housing, how many units? If it's commercial, how much square footage? Whether grant funding would be available, like Mass Works funding now that the town's compliant with 3A or eligible for grant funding. It would need to be, like any project, a creative combination of sources, but it wouldn't be solely town sources if you had a public-private partnership. That's the difference between doing that versus just a parking structure, which would solely be funded by town and potential grant money.
And my last comment will be, with regard to the housing, this very bright colleague, friend of mine that I met 10 years ago, always talked to me when, first educating me about affordable housing in the community is, and it needs to be spread around. And as you know, if you were to add anything else on Canton Avenue, you've currently got the assisted Winter Valley, 648, 652, Governor Stolt, which is on the, and then it's a lot, and then the Ice House at the intersection of Canton Ave. and the Parkway, that's an awful lot on one street. I mean, you see, I had a great discussion with some high school kids on Friday, were trying to get me to understand why traffic queues so much on Canton Avenue during the day, and it's just like, it's, that's how much traffic it carries now. So that would be, my, at least for me, and I'm not ready to vote either way, but my bigger concern goes to your initial, to Will's primary concern is additional parking for the library, which is, you know, we've been talking about this for many, many years, like going back to, I think you're right, too, my time as chief, my time at the Traffic Commission, and my time here, like, at least for me, and so that's the, I get the...
Richard, can I just make one comment about the traffic? There is currently traffic on Canton Avenue. I live on Canton Avenue, as does Ben, so we're very familiar with the traffic on Canton Avenue. However, some of that traffic does go into the parking lot, can't find a parking space, and where do they go from there? They have to go back out onto Canton Ave., cross over the traffic. And so some of this is really managing where those cars are going, not adding cars to it. And then part of any due diligence feasibility, RFP, process would be a traffic evaluation. You know, there was a traffic study done for the memory care facility that made some recommendations for signalization changes at the intersections that we're talking about, Randolph Ave. and Reed'sdale, Thatcher and Highland and Canton Ave., and those should be looked at. That traffic analysis has been done. And that was a discussion that I'm familiar with because, of course, it went through the Planning Board. But there are parts of these bottlenecks have to do with how the signals are timed. And so whether this, it could be accommodated within this stretch is part of an evaluation process. I think it's wise to do the evaluation, noting the concerns and having those concerns looked at, rather than not proceeding based on an assumption that it can't be handled.
And my last question, if I can, Mr. Gaias, is where do you think the money comes from? As you, anybody who watches our meetings on a weekly basis, we have immense pressure on so many fronts. I mean, where do you, I know it's not gonna come out of, a rabbit coming out of a hat.
Well, I think the first step is that we were looking to fund the feasibility study of the RFP, which could cost up to $10,000. And the library trustees are committed to funding, some are part, you know, part of that along with the Select Board. Part of that project will be, you know, public meetings to talk about all the things we're talking about tonight, but it'll also look into the feasibility of whether there's grants available, certain options, whether it's public-private partnership for other options. The library trustees and Library Foundation are committed to fundraising a necessary piece of this as well. So the funding hasn't been specifically identified, but I believe that the feasibility study, RFP, process would help us center in on what is actually a realistic and practical step forward.
Mr. Daley?
Have there been any other forms of mitigation that have been attempted, such as coordination around programming for times when there's lighter traffic, maybe weekends, coordination around nighttime, or has it just been the parking lot or parking spaces?
So over the last couple of years, what we've done is we've stopped double-booking programs, and that's kind of the mitigation that we've taken. We've added, we've split programs and made them twice in the morning so we can get, instead of a bottleneck at one time, we try to spread it out between two, especially for children's programs. So we've taken some minor steps like that. We've also talked to some of our neighbors about times that we can try to share parking, but we all need parking at the same time, so we haven't gotten very far on that. We try to hold our bigger programs on the weekends as there's more parking available off and around the library. So we, yeah, we are, and we've held some of our larger programs at the Pearson, at the High School, just because that's what we've needed to do, so. Yeah, we are thoughtful about when we are programming, what time of day it is, and trying not to have conflicts, so it creates a more of a bottleneck.
And with the structure, do you envision this being a structure that closes at a certain time or having overnight parking?
That's a good question. Currently, the library is, could be overnight parking, if residents use it as overnight parking. I don't think we've gotten to that scenario. We're mostly concerned with the nine to five of the library.
I think you better, I'd be careful walking down that road. I'd be very careful, like...
Right now, the Milton Police do go through the library parking lot at night, so it's part of the roof.
So one additional question that I have, and I think, Mr. Gaias, you've sort of hit the nail on the head in terms of people go into the parking lot, they turn around, they can't find a spot, they turn around, they go back out. How does this solve that problem? Because wouldn't the natural instinct of somebody be to go into the closer lot and then they're still gonna have to come back out and park at the other space?
Can I start with that? Part of this would also be that library staff would be able to park at the more remote spot, clearing up spaces just initially, so there'd be hopefully less of that turning around. We'd initially started looking at a spot probably when Richard was on the Traffic Commission, you know, a long time ago on Reed'sdale, but that was both highly trafficked and wetland, just specifically, with only enough spots for staff. So that's part of the initial answer to that. I know Cheryl has more.
Well, from what I understand from Will now is that some people just leave, you know, so here, I think there could be this management of the parking where in there, when they send out their programming, there's a request for certain patrons to use certain parts parking. Whether that is going to be something that people adhere to, I guess, you know, there won't be anything that forces them to do it. But in terms of the staff parking, it certainly would free up, I think we said 12, at least 12 spaces, 12 to 15 during the day.
And I imagine, too, the electric vehicle parking would incentivize folks to go straight to those spaces that have those cars. Mr. Wells?
Just one final point, not to get, and I don't like being ahead of my skis here. So have you been to the planning, have you been to either the planning? I don't even know this would go, planning ZB, I don't know where this would go. Have you presented this to the Planning Board? Because it really is, to me, is like a planning issue for us before it comes to us.
We're trying, no, we have not. So we are trying to get to the point where we have a definitive plan to present to a Planning Board or to the Select Board, and that's what this RFP feasibility study will provide us with.
So the Master Plan Implementation Committee has concluded its work with the library for this, so this is a way for the library to proceed with next steps that would advance the feasibility analysis of this. This is Select Board-controlled property. It's not property under the control of the library. And so advancing beyond a diagram to something that has more community engagement process and seeing the viability of whether this public-private partnership would work is the next step that the library would like to take. During that public engagement process, certainly Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and others, Historical Commission would be engaged.
Such you, we're not voting on this, we're just getting this tonight, right?
Well, they've put a proposal for us, so I think, you know, we could have a motion to vote.
I'd rather think about this for a minute. There's a lot, so I want to think about this. To move forward with the study? No, I want to think about, before we move forward, I want to give it some time to think. There's a lot, like, I'm not, I don't have any, there's a lot, just the trees alone is gonna be, you wait, two speakers tonight, you have 50 next week. My trees is a big issue.
Well, so I do think that, you know, an RFP process provides for public input and engagement where you could have a lot of those discussions, where it's not limited to three minutes at Citizen Speak at the start of a meeting, but really more of an engaged conversation and dialogue with folks that care about those issues. The, for me, the two things that kind of stand out are obviously, number one, this is an issue that's been plaguing the library for more than a decade. And two, if there is, if there are grant funds available and we could get, say, a coffee shop or a cafe or something like that in that space, the revenue for the town from commercial would be good, and the offsetting of the grants, you know, from the space would be good. So I think in absence of grants and, you know, private funding for a space like this, we just, obviously, we wouldn't have the money to do it. But that's what you have an RFP process for. So that's, for me, like, I think the big question, and then also, obviously, looking at some of these other issues as well, light and parking and trees.
Do we have, do we have thoughts on what would go into the feasibility study? Like, how would it be structured? How would it be? I think that, you know, there's, there's the scoping of the feasibility itself.
The, in preparation for this meeting, I offered to the library representatives to reach out to folks to see if they could provide guidance on how they would proceed with the feasibility study. One of the people that I reached out to was our former Planning Director, Tim Zerwinski. He put me in touch with someone, and I reached out to several others and heard from some and not from others, heard back from some. So you have a proposal through Nick or through Mr. Milano that outlines what this approach might be, and I can just run through it at a high level. So, so one is just, is to review all the work that's been done and to confirm what the goals are in the work. And then some planning scenarios that take beyond what was done already, and those planning scenarios would include a robust community engagement process. It wouldn't necessarily be technical in nature in terms of doing, let's say, a survey or an engineering analysis, but it would set forward what would be expected in an RFP response. And so at the, the request for proposal would be drafted in this process, and all of the things that would need to be confirmed or addressed, such as a traffic study, such as a documentation of the existing trees. Typically, that's documented in terms of species, in terms of what their...
Age.
Age is, and their caliper, and so it can be calculated on a total basis so that one could see whether, how much is lost and whether that could be replaced elsewhere. There would be two large community, public meetings as a part of that process, and the entire process would be guided by this advisory committee that would be composed of, as Jim said, as suggested, planning, I'm sorry, member of the Library Board of Trustees, Chris Hoddland, library director, town administrator or assistant town administrator, myself for some continuity, a Select Board member, and two members of the public who have some expertise in this sort of work we identified as real estate development, planning, and architecture. But that, if there's other suggestions about that, if we felt as if a small group that would be a touch point for the consultant to get help guide. So the consultants definitely would be guided by the town, not come in with any outside predetermined ideas.
So what are the members thinking about now for next steps?
It just, I think I would...
Oh, sorry. No, you started talking before I did. Oh, sorry. No, you started talking before I did.
I think in terms of the feasibility study, I'd want it to be a larger scope because there's a lot in that area. I'm not sure that.
More money.
That limiting it to just library parking, that may be a little short sighted. Given that we are town hall, fire department, the green where we have events, to put a parking structure there has a lot bigger impact than just providing the library with some relief and giving folks some extra parking spots. Is it possible that this parking structure goes up and the library still has the issue? Because folks are using that parking, parking lot for other things, right? To make it more convenient, more people are driving. I think for feasibility, I'm, I have to find out what the cost would be from our side. This is, it's not binding, just to find out what the impacts would be. So I'd be okay with that as long as the cost is not too prohibitive. But I think we'd have to take into account more than just the library's needs in that space.
Ms. Hagerdy?
You've read my mind. No, so I am, I am open, I am open to the concept of a feasibility study. I would want to sit with it. I would want to sit with the scope of that feasibility study a bit longer and ask some more questions before voting on it. And I agree with member Daly on the need to take a more, I mean, this is kind of, and I think this was also in the master plan, like the consideration of like a civic center or area. At least also just understanding the traffic dynamics and impact of that. But also, you know, not to, so, so that was mentioned as a potential concept of not suggesting we do that. But given that we do have the hospital, police, library, town hall, churches, council on aging and all kinds of residential mixed in. You know, there is, there is a bit broader of an area that's impacted that we should evaluate.
Mr. Guys?
Yes, I just want to make you aware of some of the background information. As part of the analysis that we did, there, when the fire station was, headquarters was first being proposed, the master plan implementation committee asked that committee, the fire station building committee, to meet with us because we were concerned that, that they consider the entirety of the, let's say, called town hall campus in their planning. And so we engaged the Metropolitan Area Planning Council to do some planning work. And we documented, there were public meetings for that. We documented the existing parking capacity around town hall, traffic patterns. We did speak to them about the potential use of the old fire station, how that might change the parking demand. We did parking utilization of town hall employees. So there's a lot of information about the capacity around town hall, what the needs are. We don't have to start from scratch. We didn't go into all of the background because we picked, kind of picked up from where we were bef, the last time before this, we're understanding that there's new members on the board. But there is a lot of background information on the use even the churches, the daycare centers, the Wildcat then, there's a lot of different users here, even the council on aging. It was asked whether there could be capacity here. They've increased their programming, their capacity during the day, which is the same high demand time is also full, is when there's the most use at town hall. It was the art committee that had really advocated for the crosswalk that's in yellow on this slide, but it's actually in person, exists now. So that we could get some cross utilization. And the planning overall for town center is something that I think the, still should happen, continue to happen. That will be significantly more than just under 10,000 to do that work. But the conversation about what other uses could, could be combined with parking is a good conversation. It was the ma, the master plan itself had suggested that potentially a food use would be a good use here. In that planning work, youth were engaged. There was one session where youth participated. And they were supportive of having a place to get some food. There's, as Will said, there's a lot of.
The blue garage would have golden arches if you let them decide.
My kids will kill me if they graduated at Milton High School and there's a, a coffee shop goes in there, by the way.
Even town hall, staff were very interested in the survey that was done. So I just, I just want to make you aware that there is a lot of data that can be brought forth in this process already.
Would you be concerned, Will, with the coffee cups coming in if there was a coffee shop there as a librarian?
No, not at all. We already have people coming in with coffee cups and maybe they leave some of them at the coffee shop and not bring them to the library. So it might even be a benefit. But no, it, that's, we do see, you know, 30, 40, 50 middle schoolers, high schoolers after school every day. And it's great that they all feel welcome to come to the library. But like I led with, like, there's not enough seats in the building sometimes. So having, you know, a place for them near the library, there could be a stop on the way and kind of another place for, for people to go after school. While town hall people use it before they get out of school and after. No, I'm not concerned about that.
Okay. And so, Mr. Milano, you have a draft from the trustees for this?
Yes, I received it. I have not yet distributed it.
No, because it's not on, it's just on for a discussion tonight.
So I think, yes, so I think maybe this has been very informative. I want to make sure if everyone's had the opportunity to ask all the questions that they have at the moment. So if that's the case, then I think we'll, we need to review that draft RFP. And we'll, we should probably give some thought also to, you know, how do we recruit citizens to be members of that, of a process if we decide to go in that direction? But there's not, there's, I don't think any immediate action from us at the moment, other than just learning more from those documents and then continuing to get input from, from everyone. Does that sound right to, to folks?
I just, I just want to make one, I agree. I made only one final comment as Mr. Guys mentioned the fire station building committees, you know, I sat on that committee, especially during that long process here. And the neighbors of this neighborhood were integral in this whole, everything you've talked about, every single, I don't even know how many meet, and they were clearly put their footprint on fingerprints on what exists in this beautiful space today. And as far as transformation of the old fire station, which I still can't believe when I look at it today, the creation of the new 21st century current headquarters, the green space beside it, the walking path, the parking, the continuity to the COA, this building, the two churches, which I don't think people really realize, unless you come to this building every day, especially the impact of how busy the center school, like this is a busy, this is as busy as a public school. I mean, this is a busy, busy place. And they pushed right up against us into, into your point about pressure on the parking. If people can park, they're going to try and use it. I mean, I'm sure there are some people that go to the Times will use the library parking. I mean, they just, what Mr. Daly talked about, it's, it's going to happen. So I, this is a big, I'm just for me, and I'm not a planner. And I have no, so I don't want to be ahead of my skis on this. And I just want to, I'm fine with it. Like, let's give this some. What do you call it? Let this soak.
Yes, Mr. Guys.
The June 24 public forum was recorded, I believe. And I think that would be beneficial, background information, rather than reading through documents for you all to get an overview of what brought us to this point.
June 24 of this year?
June 24, was it June, June of 2024, the exact date in June, I'm not sure.
Oh, June 24, I see what you're saying. Okay. Yeah, if you have that, you could always send it to us, just sbmiltonma.gov. So I think unless there's any final comments, obviously this is a big problem. It's a longstanding issue and really appreciate the persistence that you guys have shown in trying to think about this and think creatively about it. I think the select board will take some time to review the material and, and give this some thought. But I think you can expect us to bring this back on the agenda in the, in the future.
Thank you. I want to leave you with one last parting thought is if this does become a public-private partnership, there is an opportunity for new growth in revenue at a time at which we just passed a large override.
Oh, we're aware of that.
That's very much.
You don't have to tell us that one. We know all about that. We dream about that at night.
All right. Thank you very much. And Will, I think we're going to ask you to stay put for a minute. Oh, all right. You're welcome to stay. So item number five is a departmental update from our library, our librarian, library director.
Library director.
Yes.
He's a long way from being a librarian. He even comes and speaks at the state house.
Yeah, that's right. I'll get to that probably.
Okay.
Let's see.
So I might just, for, for folks that are watching, we've had over the last couple of months, different town departments come in and present on their departments, sort of the state of, giving the select board and the town an update and giving us an opportunity to ask some questions and just get to learn more about the department. So we're very delighted to have, as, as the son of a librarian, which I always point out with Will, I'm always delighted to have the librarians and the library directors here with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, Will Adams is your library director, Jim Potter.
Jim Potter, Chair of the Trustees.
And we're happy to have a few moments, because we haven't had enough moments with you tonight, to talk a little bit about library services in Milton and what we've been doing and where we're headed. So tonight, I'm just going to look at some statewide fiscal 24 numbers because those are the most recent state provided library numbers. A review of fiscal 25, library usage, talking about digital and physical circulation of, of materials, programming, some of the highlights and improvements that we've done at the library. And then shift gears into fiscal 26, where we find ourselves today. So this is a snapshot of some libraries from fiscal 24. So the Mass Board of Library Commissioners breaks libraries into cohorts based on population size. So you can see that we, we were grouped in with towns from Amherst out in Western Mass to Chelsea, right in the Boston area. This is a cohort of about, of 51 libraries. So I'm showing you the, according to their circulation activity, which is the things that we check out, showing you the best, the worst, the middle, and then kind of where Milton fits in, we're, we're number 20 when it comes to circulation activity. So from this, what I'll point out is while we're 42nd in population in this pool of libraries, we're in the top 20 or better for total usage. And again, usage is how many books are checked out, magazines, audiobooks, videos, DVDs, I should say. Circulation per capita, so the number of items our residents are taking out. Circulation per full-time employee, which when we look at numbers, we are doing more with less staffing. We get a good return on investment for the library staff that we have here in Milton. So that's just kind of a snapshot, just to show you where we fit in, in our cohort. Looking at fiscal 25, which, you know, we finished a couple of months back, our total collection usage was over 400,000 items. Again, that's a combination of things people are walking out the door with or they're sitting on their couch and downloading. There's a 14% increase over the previous year and a 21% increase over a five-year time period. That number is a little funny because we were closed part of five years ago due to COVID. But we have a lot more digital use. So overall, it's a 21% increase. Digital numbers were up 38% over fiscal 24. That number just keeps climbing. The highest increasing thing is audiobooks, people listening to audiobooks as they commute. It was our highest number ever for digital usage. What this also means is increased spending. Libraries are able to get hardcover books at discount. We're able to get them for 15, 18 bucks or cheaper. And we can put those on our shelf and we can have them there for 100 years. eBooks, and this is one of the reasons I was at the state house and I saw Richard was because eBooks cost $50, digital audiobooks cost $100 for libraries. And you can only use them for a year or 12 checkouts and then you got to buy them again and again and again. So we're working at the state level on trying to increase access, decrease prices. So we have a bill that came favorably out of the Tourism, Arts and Culture Committee on the, on the Senate side. And we're continuing to work with that. But it, what it means for Milton is it's increased spending. We're spending more on digital stuff than we are on print copies, but we still need both. We also introduced new platforms like Mango, which is a language learning service in the past year. So physical usage is staying about steady. People are still checking out books. And I'll talk a little bit more about who is checking out those books. I just want to show you kind of a five-year picture. Again, the top line there shows total usage is increasing. Digital use peaked in 21 when we had COVID and now it went down, normalized and is coming back up. And you can see print circulation is right there in the middle, kind of holding a solid line. This is just a, a look at what people are checking out. 46% are still physical print books, 45% is digital, some kind of digital thing, whether it's a magazine article, a book, an audiobook. Believe it or not, 5% is still DVDs. That hasn't gone away. So print is dropping, digital is increasing. What kinds of digital things are people using? More than half of it are eBooks or audiobooks. But there's also library software, there's streaming video, streaming music, magazines. And the other category kind of catches, whether it's language learning, databases with journal articles. We have videos to help people learn how to use software. We have LinkedIn learning. So there's different things that fall into the other category. And it's about a 50-50 split between children and families using library materials and adults using library materials, with teens kind of making up that little splinter of 4%. However, 62% of our print usage is children's books, 62%. It's families coming to those storytimes in the morning, digital 80% adult. So there's more on offer digitally for adult. That makes sense. We also offer programming. We talked about that earlier. We are, we're kind of plateauing a little bit at around 20,000, 21,000. And part of this is a capacity issue. We, we're, we're limiting the number of people in programs, especially children's programs, because we can only fit so many in the room, we can only fit so many cars in the parking lot. I wanted to point out that while we see this number jump really high for the children's is, is high above everything else. Most of our programming is children's. The teen line looks at the bottom kind of level, but it's gone up 33% over last year. Two budgets ago, we added a part-time position to our teen room to deal with adding programming for the teens who were there after school. And it's been successful. We've offered more programs, more teens and tweens have attended those. The adult programming, we've had some turnover in the library over the last year with retirements. And we're starting a brand new adult programming team. So we'll see changes to adult programming coming in fiscal 26. New types of programming, we're going to work on different times for the programming. So you'll see some changes in those numbers. And there's a couple of highlights of things that the library has accomplished over the last year and a half. We hosted Calvin Henick as our third writer in residence. We've had three really successful writer in residence programs. We have a lot of really good writers in Milton and we've been able to build this program over the last three years. We made improvements to the story hour room and the children's room, both with technology, furniture, and painting, all from, you know, from the floor to the ceiling. We've installed two NOOK study pods, which look like phone booths. If people remember what phone booths are, they're individual study pods. They are somewhat sound dampening. They're used almost all day, especially in the afternoons. It blocks out the noise from the room around you. We're looking to add more of those to have, provide quiet spaces. We just had our fourth annual open house last week. We had over 300 people attend that. And that was one of the instances where we needed to get police detail. where we needed to get police detail. And we upgraded our online calendar and museum pass system. Again, programs, we have 20,000 people attending our programs. We're trying to make it as easy as possible to register and to make it as clear as possible how to do so. It also upgraded our museum pass system. The Friends of the Library provide museum passes, and hundreds of people a year go at discounted rates to local museums. Money. Can't get away without talking a little bit about money. So the fiscal 26 library budget's approximately $1.9 million, but we can't do everything we do just with that. We rely on approximately 200,000. It goes higher than that, lower than that, depending on projects, from a combination of the library trustees' trust funds, from the Friends of the Library who pay for all of the programming, they pay for the performers and the materials needed, they pay for the museum passes. The foundation pays for pilot projects, they pay for ebooks, but they all together cover staff development, programming, digital content, speakers, and so on. Again, the fiscal 26 budget is status quo for the library. We have one and a half positions that remain unfunded that were previously approved. Our books and materials are funded to the state minimum requirement. I'll emphasize the word "minimum requirement." That's why we rely on the Friends, the foundation, and the trustees to boost it above that. Just to note, this is the same with many departments. We're in the final year of our union contract. Other than that, the budget increased due to inflation for utilities. I just want to point out our strategic priorities. I'm not going to read them all to you, but the library does a lot of its work based on our strategic plan. We're in the fourth year of a five-year strategic plan that identified the library as a community hub, a place that should provide excellent customer service, that should offer access to all kinds of collections and services, and to provide programming for all ages for our residents. This year, we're going to continue working on our speaker series. Last year, we had Dennis Lehane, which was a really well-attended program up at the high school. We're looking at 24-hour book lockers where people can pick up books on hold after hours from the library, that'd be outside the main branch. We're going to continue our open house events. We are expanding our patron point system. What this is, is it's an email system that it's a welcoming package to new library users. It's something we started this year. We've had staffing changes like I referenced. We've had retirements, but we've also had promotions. So we've done some restructuring within the library, and we've taken more of a team approach, so we can use more of everybody's talents. And we've already talked about parking. We also have initiatives around staff training and development, conference attendance, certification opportunities for our library assistants. I referenced the ebook bill that I've been working on with the Mass Library Association. We also have a Freedom to Read bill, which is an anti-censorship bill that also came out of that same joint committee in the State House. We're optimistic that could be signed Band Books Week in October. We're working with the ACLU, among others, on that bill. And I'm sure you all know the state budget looks grand, so we're not expecting any increases in state funding for library use.
I don't know if I'd use that word.
I know. I'm sorry. We, I was on a call with the Mass Board of Library Commissioners this week. State aid to public libraries is something that we rely on. It's been about $60,000 to $70,000 in funding that we get on an annual basis, based on how well-used the Milton Public Library is. And this is usually to pay for things outside of the budget, whether a computer dies, a printer dies, or something like that. We're not expecting increases from the state in this year. That was fairly quick, but I hope I covered a lot of things. I'll just take the opportunity to thank all of the library staff, who are great, and they're the welcoming faces that people see. They don't always see me at the front door, but they see our circulation staff, our children's staff, our adult services and teen staff every day, and they're what makes us work. So thank you to the library staff and the support of Jim and the trustees.
If I could just, if I could just add, Milton has one of the best libraries in the Commonwealth, and that's because of Will and Sarah and the team. So I want to recognize their efforts and their service to the community.
Thank you. Questions from the members?
Should we take a motion, give them a raise?
Could I move that? No.
You're alike. Go ahead. You go first.
I don't think the chair goes first. I think the chair usually goes.
So I'll start. I'll start. I do, I do, I want to, you know, echo all the thanks that's going around. I liked seeing your, your, your goals, and I do, I believe that you do very well at being a community hub and trying to find ways to offer opportunities and services for all, for all of our residents. And my kids really have always enjoyed the library, and we probably have a lot of books in bookcases that are due back, so.
We're fine-free now, so bring them back anytime.
So.
Thought you said you needed money.
We need to get all that. Yeah. But so the book Dropbox, that seems like an interesting project. Can you speak a little bit more to that? Like, what efficiencies does that achieve, or is that an efficiency measure or just a service?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's more of a service. It's an efficiency for our users, a service from the library. It's something that we've heard in focus groups that we did during the strategic planning and kind of continue to do on a regular basis. There are, we have, we're open a lot of hours, but we're not open always the best hours for all our residents. So what this would do is it would provide access to people, whether it's before they go to work, after, you know, after-work, a shift later in the evening, where they can pick up books that they have put on hold. So it's just, it's more of a convenience for people who can't get to us when, when we're currently open. And if it's something that's successful, because we're expecting it to be, because we've had call for it, it's something that the library could consider putting in other places throughout the community.
Do you have like nighttime or off-hours drop-off?
We have 24-hour drop-off.
We already have it. Okay.
Yeah, this is more pickup than drop-off. We have 24-hour drop-off, yeah. So if you're feeling bad about the books.
So there's no excuse to like knock at the books back.
No, you could do it in the middle of the night. No one will see it. Just put them right in.
I'm still reading that. No, thank you.
No, thank you very much.
Mr. Daley?
Yeah, thank you for being here. I'm at the library a fair amount, whether donating a lot of books, which I've been doing recently, or just to get out of my house when I'm working from home. So I think the only question I would have is, do you aside parking? Are there any needs or struggles that the library's having right now?
Yeah, I'd say, I mentioned we're kind of at, we're at capacity. We, to do anything else, we need people, so that one and a half positions that we identified a few years ago would help with being able to add more programming at different times of day. You know, we'd be able to spread it out among more children's librarians. We've been working harder on outreach, so anytime the teen librarian might go off-site to a school late in the day or do something afterwards, it leaves a blank. You know, we're a fairly tight ship, so our need is staffing. That's our primary need. I will say, keep donating books. The library bookshop makes close to $18,000 a year selling used books, and that goes directly into library programming. So that's great. So thank you.
That's amazing. Mr. Wells?
Thank you. So a couple of things. Clearly, I have, in my personal life, I have a relationship with the foundation, through another foundation, and you've done some pretty good work there, and I think we've done a lot to support that over the years. Just a true story. Two weeks ago, I traveled with 30 legislators to Ireland, Northern Ireland, on a trade mission. And it was my 19th trip in my life, but it was the first, kind of amazing that I'm walking the streets of both Northern Ireland Parliament and the, two days later, the Parliament of Dublin. But several years ago, the speaker at the Library Gala Foundation was a gentleman by the name of Patrick Keefe, and I believe Patrick went to Milton Academy, am I correct?
That's right.
Milton Academy, grew up in Dorchester. And the review he gave was on a book called Say Nothing. And it's a story of the Northern Ireland Trouser and a murder investigation that happened many, many years ago, bestselling book. And he provided riveting, I think he read a little bit from it that night.
He did, yeah.
And I bought it the next day and read it, and I've, I've given it to many others to read, because it's, it's a very riveting. But I did speak about this book last week when I walked the Shankill Road in the north of Ireland, one of the violent streets ever existed in all of North America, all of Europe. And I made reference to his book and actually referred it to some of my colleagues, that they should buy it and read it. And I would have never met him or read that book, had I not attended that series. So my last point is a point of severe disappointment, and I feel heartbroken for your colleague and my friend, library trustee John Focarelli, who for the past eight years fought so diligently on the Capitol Committee, which I happen to chair, to get a generator for your facility to allow, in the event of a power failure in the world, and you talked just about how much you rely on electronic devices for so many things today. And John was able to get, we were able to get that passed through town meeting this year, and I just want you all to know, without John's advocacy, it probably wouldn't have happened. And he sat through a lot of no's, at least five years of no's, like, sorry, John, we can't fund it, sorry, John, we can't fund it. And this year, we were able to finally fund it. And I say this with a bit of humor, because it's an important thing, and it's an important aspect for your facility, the infrastructure of your facility moving forward in the 21st century. So congrats to all of you on that. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm sure you all will get a kick out of those comments.
So I'd add my thanks. I think the library is one of the jewels of Milton. It's just such a fantastic resource for really everyone in town, regardless of your background, of your age. The library has something for you. The one thing I, you know, from your presentation, we just talked about parking for ages, so I don't want to, you know, make you stay up here for too much longer, but one thing really jumped out at me was discussion around banned books and censorship. This is something, and, you know, we don't often talk about what's going on on the national stage in our meetings here, but it's something that's very concerning to me, that we're seeing an uptick in this at the state level, in different parts of the country, and I worry very strongly that it may end up happening at the national level as well. Could you speak a little bit about what that, what those activities look like and what the sort of general scuttlebutt is in the library community on this issue?
Yes. Thanks for the question. I'm always hesitant to talk about it, because we always feel like we're inviting it when we speak of it. But I will say this, about two months ago, I sat through three hours of testimony at the State House on a Freedom to Read bill and listened to stories of librarians throughout the Commonwealth, both public school librarians, public librarians, telling stories of books being banned, but also leading to harassment of staff, widespread congregations of people trying to stop, whether it's a program or get books out of libraries. I will say this, Massachusetts has been in the top five of states for banned, not banned books, but challenged books, predominantly from outside actors, actors from outside of our Commonwealth. It is more of a, the book banning groups are more national, they're from states you would expect them to be from, and they give kind of a, this is what you read, this, or they give lists of up to 100 books to residents in all the states and say, go to your school committee and have these removed from your school library, or go to your public library. So usually, it comes in the form of a blanket list that we all kind of see the same books on this list. But the bannings predominantly are challenging books by, especially the black community, any people of color. They go after the queer community, the LGBTQ plus community. It's, it's those communities that are being hit the hardest, because those are voices that are being silenced. So while the librarians might be facing the person who's angry that the book's there, it's these voices that are being silenced. And it's, it's children or adults or whoever who might want to come in and read a book that is by someone who looks like them, or by somebody who feels like them, and those books are, could not be in those libraries eventually. I'm not overly concerned in Massachusetts. I think that our legislature and most of our communities are strongly support the freedom to read, and it's an anti-censorship community that we generally live in. But, but there are communities around us, especially in the public schools, that are facing challenges on a regular basis. The Mass Library Association and the Mass Board of Library Commissioners offer as much assistance and help as possible. We've worked with the ACLU and the Mass ACLU. We've worked with a number of other nonprofits as the challenges are coming at different groups, so we've worked with them. The Milton Public Library has not had to deal with any kind of real formal challenges, and I'm really grateful for that. We have a very good community when it comes to that. But you never know when it's going to happen. So the library tries to be prepared, the trustees. We have a policy for challenging books and what they're, what we would go through and the review process for that. But it would be nice to have some support from some sort of statewide bill that could come down into the communities as well. I don't want to be doom and gloom, like, the state's great, we're celebrating diversity, we're celebrating all these different voices. And it's because we're celebrating those voices and trying to make them accessible to all, that we're getting pushback. But again, it's mostly small groups and usually not in the community where the challenges are being faced. So, I don't know, I overdid that answer, but.
No, you did not. You did it justice, I think. And I think, you know, one of the first rules for resisting authoritarianism is do not voluntarily give in.
Right.
And, you know, that we're putting these methods in place, that we're thinking actively about what we would do in these circumstances. I think you're to be commended on that.
Right.
So thank you for your advocacy on that and for your planning on that.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the board?
See, thirty. Let's let them go home.
Let's let them go home?
Thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have our, on our agenda, our next item is Town Council Services. Mr. Milano, do you want to kick us off on this one? Are you recusing yourself, Mr. Wells? Or just using, okay, okay. I didn't think so. Different kind of recusal. You want us to wait for you on this?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Milano, do you want to kick us off maybe? I don't know if you have anything to add from our last conversation.
I don't think so. I'm happy to answer any questions. I do want to note that we did get an email from Attorney Jay Talman from Need Talman Costa with some additional background on their roster of attorneys and their experience. I distributed that to the select board today. Other than that, the members of the board received Attorney Goldberg's email last week with additional information as well. So available for any questions, but I don't have anything else to add unless there's something specific.
No, and I want to thank you also. You gave me the names of three individuals. One of the numbers didn't work, but the other two did. And I spoke with the Select Board Chair of, at Manson, Josh Levine, and also the Chair of the City Council in Havre, Tom Sullivan, today. They're both, both towns have switched to MTC, and they, both towns have been extremely happy with the services that they've been receiving through them. I think Tom in particular has known members from that firm for a long time, but both of them had nothing but good things to say and said that MTC was a firm that they would recommend highly. They found that they would get quick, concise answers on any number of topics. And while, you know, I asked about the depth at MTC, they said that they didn't doubt that they had that depth, but really, they always felt like the attorneys that they were working with, and I think in Manson it was Jay, were able to usually give them answers so quickly that they were, they felt like, you know, if they were relying on the depth, they didn't even know about it, because it was, the turnaround was so fast on their questions. So I was suitably impressed with that. So I don't know if we want to discuss any further. We had a conversation, we've had a couple of conversations about this. There's four firms that have put applications in. I'm happy to, you know, have more discussion, or I can also take a motion. I'm happy to, you know, have more discussion or I can I can also take a motion.
Well, I, you know, I took the opportunity with more time to speak to some folks who who participated in the the screening committee. A lot of them really had had good, I mean, these are all good firms, first and foremost. Every single one of them is really good and really qualified. When I spoke to folks, KP was far and away the the best, the best firm, you know, just just talking with everybody. And the more, the more I've reflected and considered, I think that, you know, given that this is a shift, for me, as I mentioned at our last meeting, it was really between KP and Mead Tallerman. I really like them both. I think, you know, being slightly more risk averse, just given their their size, their their bench, I'm I'm now slightly more inclined toward KP. But that's just my thought.
Mr. Wells?
So I think I want to take a minute here to reflect on, because I think we're going to make a decision here tonight that's, regardless of what decision we make, so I want to talk first about, because it looks like we're going to make a change in direction. I think that's what, even if I voted not to, I I think that the three of you. And and I really want to talk for a minute because, sorry, I've said this previously. You know, Murphy Hesse has been entrenched here for all my, almost all of my professional career, which is now almost four decades. And and in talking, I did the same as Ms. Hagerty did. I talked to Chair Concon, Chair ZB A, Town Moderator, former colleagues, colleagues in Dedham, who who used KP, because I wanted to find out a little bit about more KP. And I don't, I think it's appropriate that if if it is going to make, I think it's important to make note of just how much Murphy Hesse, to me, has shaped so many projects in this town. We wouldn't, I mean, I've been on this board for nine years and those nine years were approved over 500 affordable, you know, projects, you know, projects that are across the town. Some of them were tough. Seven Eleven ran off that was a really tough, we went all the way to the SJC, we wound up going to outside council. That that was, but there've been in contracts and disasters and COVID and so many things. John Flynn and Michael Hain, especially intricate parts, Michael Hain, one of his time on the Labor, many years as Labor Counsel, have really done yeoman's work for this community. And I just want to thank them for everything they've done. I know many of them personally. I was impressed with Ms., is it Ms. Connolly that who came? Who came in? I've not met her. I was on Zoom, but she came with Karis and Catherine. I've heard many good things about her, but it appears this is going to happen. And so given that, and especially, I was very impressed with Attorney Goldberg. I really was. And and in, and I give great weight, some people tease me because historically, Kate Connolly and I ran against each other, but became close colleagues for eight years. And I give great weight to what she thinks, particularly on legal things, because that has been her baby for as long as I've known her, from her time with the Warren Committee, to on the select board, to everything is been about. And she meant, she said to me, like, she said, if you're going to go second, KP is the way to go. And Catherine O'Donnell called me right away. As soon as she got home, she'd been on the big, she was texting me from, I think she was in Iceland. And then, you know, these are people who, and John Cannon, who's probably our most senior chair, was happy with Murphy Hesse, but felt KP Law, you know, the depth, the bench, their history, their involvement. Because even when you see the things, and I think about, you know, we get, you guys are new, you just start again, you get those emails from Murphy Hesse on on updates. Those are things that are really important. And I, with regard to KP, on a big, broad spectrum, they have that, they have that bench, they have a bullpen, they have that record. And just look at the issues that you two are dealing with, and you've been here, what, five months? Is it even five months? And I don't even know, but I mean, you deal with this. This is, I said, you know, we're going to make a decision tonight that's going to affect every board committee we've talked about and boards that are going to be here, definitely beyond me and probably all of us. And so in in that tone, I agree with Ms. Hagerty. I I do think that KP Law would be the best fit, given their breadth of experience and the bench and their their work ethic. I mean, I was, Dedham had great things to say and that was. I wanted to be really sure because this, I had to really think about this. Even though we all know there have been hiccups here that have caused us some consternation recently, Murphy Hesse has been in so many battles here that I can't even, you know, they helped shape the town into what it is today.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Mr. Daley, do you have thoughts?
I'll be brief. I think we should move to vote. But at our last meeting, said we'd have some conversations and I had those with town employees as well as just residents and folks with some history in the town. And I think all four firms are great. Murphy Hesse, I appreciate, obviously, I've not been in town for 40 years, but I appreciate the history. And Member Wells, what you've said always resonates with me about what this means to the town and the folks that have been here and have put a lot of work in in building the town as well. So not a decision that we take lightly. Placings, a firm that has been so integral in Milton and made so many decisions. But, you know, sometimes the time comes for change. And I think three firms have been really impressive. I think, I don't think there's a, there's a wrong way to go. But I think perhaps it's time for us to take this vote.
Do you want a motion?
I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion, is this the hand, this is the motion here?
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve Town Council Service. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, I need to, should have looked out farther. I move to appoint the law firm KP Law PC for Town Council Services in Milton, Mass, subject to fee negotiation and the approval of a letter of engagement by the select board.
Do we have to vote on who each, are we all?
We all vote. Well, unless somebody wants to make a motion on this, I mean, there's a motion.
I'll make it with a point of discussion and then if someone wants to second, then someone, we can.
I'll second. For the sake of discussion.
The point of discussion, you want to go in a different direction?
No.
Oh, okay.
I I don't want to, I mean, I I'm fine with this. I, you know, I I talked with Attorney Goldberg at length after one of our meetings. And was, I think, you know, she had paid close attention to our discussion and debate and had some very thoughtful comments and I had encouraged her to circulate them to to everyone, which I think she's done. And so I I I'm very fine with this. I think as both, all all members have said, this is a big decision, not one that we take lightly. It's something that I think all of the firms know that we've, we've spent a lot of time thinking about this. But I think, you know, I think for the town's sake, we, it would, it will be positive to to make a change and to move in this direction. So I've seconded the motion. Any further discussion on this?
No, my question was only for process. My vote would have been for KP as well.
Okay. Well, so all those in favor of appointing KP for Town Council Services, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that's unanimous, which is, I think, the way that it should be. So we'll go ahead. Mr. Milano, you'll go ahead and start with the negoti, the approval of a letter of engagement for the select board?
Yes, I can, I can follow up with Attorney Goldberg and request that they submit a letter of engagement. And I do think we should push on the fee. As there's, as this board has discussed, there was a close second that had a lower fee. So I think we should really push on that fee and I'll report back to the board and hopefully we can get that engagement wrapped up.
I would agree with that and they have given us indication that they would consider that, yeah, so I think that's.
Wouldn't you?
I would, yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I just want to
Please, Mr. Milano.
just second all the comments about the relationship with Murphy Hesse. I think if I have the same rapport and relationship with the, with Darren Klein, who will be the primary contact, and Lauren, who's the secondary contact at KP Law as we have, that I have with Peter Mello, will be in in really good shape. And one of the other firms spoke about, I liked how they characterize being part of the team. And I feel like Peter has been that for us and for myself in particular. And I think that's, if we can get that out of them, we'll be in really good shape. And I appreciate the comments around MHTL and the process that this board undertook. So just wanted to add that.
Thank you. And I I would say also a note of thanks to Mr. Mello specifically. I worked closely with him for a couple of years. I find him to be extraordinarily smart, very knowledgeable in in all fields. I, ultimately correct in all of the advice that he had given us around MBT communities, which was quite a fraught discussion, as we all know. And I am really grateful for the time that he has spent on, working for this town. And I've appreciated him as a person as well as as a colleague. So I would second all those, those thoughts. So with that, I'm going to move to put the select board at recess so that we can convene a meeting of the Governor Stotan trustees. Can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor of being at recess or do we need to, we don't need to vote at recess, do we?
The chair can declare.
I'll just declare recess. Thank you. I'll just declare it. So we are going to now call to order the meeting of the Governor Stotan trustees for September 9th. We are going to discuss, discuss, update, approve, report from the Town Farm Review Committee. And then we have also the RFP process to discuss. So, Mr. Milano, is there, the Town Farm Review Committee's report, is there, are there actions for, from us needed on that?
No, I've just left it on the agenda as it's all tied together. So we had been providing the report and the review comments. We received also some individual comments from members who served on that committee. So we had distributed those at this and prior meetings. So no action needed for the trust. I just had left it on there just to refer to those reports.
Okay. So I, we're at a point here, I think, where we'll be discussing the RFPs that that were ultimately submitted, I believe, in the fall of 2023. And here we are, almost two years later. The, this is obviously a process that has gotten a lot of people interested and involved, a lot of conversations. We had some Citizen Speak comments, which we can address shortly, I think. This is, this is a story that goes back over 300 years to the death of of Governor Stotan and the will in which he left this property to the town. A will that I've noted previously also included a slave as well as other property, to give you an idea of how long ago, but also not how long ago. This, this issue has gone back. It's a land whose history we've discussed in detail for many years, functioned as a poor farm for the town, functioned as housing for poor residents of the town. And until recently was almost, well, we should say questionably used for an animal shelter, which we now have a beautiful new animal shelter in a, in a different location. But we are at a point here, I think, where we're going to discuss the approval or possible approval from the Milton Partnership for Community Reinvestment LLC. So with that, I'll open up the floor to comments or thoughts from the members.
I'll go last.
Oh, wait. I'm, I'm, two things. First, I would like to hear from Nick on a couple of the questions that were asked by Roxane Musto, just so we can have some clarity. Because I think there's some questions that have been asked today about our process. And if Member Wells would indulge us, I would love to hear his thoughts in terms of the history of the land and where we are with this RFP. So the question was asked, who owns the land and who would pay for the infrastructure and the legal? Would you mind taking us through kind of the process, just for the folks who are listening right now, where we are as to how we got here, who owns the land?
Yes, the land was gifted to the town of Milton to be used by the selectmen for the Poor of Milton. So it's, it's in a, it's considered to be in a charitable trust and the Governor Stotan trustees are the selectmen. So it's a charitable trust, so owned by the town, but managed by the trustees around this table. In terms of infrastructure, we spoke a bit about this at the prior meeting, but it's not the town's responsibility to connect any private development. So it would be on the applicant or any developer or any, any use really going in there to connect to the existing water and sewer infrastructure, to adhere to stormwater regulations on drainage and stormwater. And that goes beyond just tying in. They have to validate that their additional flows or consumption wouldn't negatively impact the rest of the system. And if the system can't handle it, that applicant and developer is expected to pay for the cost of the upgrades. And that is how projects are handled wherever they are in Milton today. In terms of street infrastructure, obviously, that's a public way. Governor Stotan Lane, that goes up to the Town Farm. If improvements are requested as through the land dis, any land disposition agreement, that is negotiated. That may be on the applicant, it might be on through a grant program. So there are different options in order. Once you get, start talking about public infrastructure in terms of the public ways that surround the project. Again, that's, that could have any number of funding sources and also could be negotiated as part of an ultimate lease or land disposition agreement. She had also asked about legal. Town Council has always managed and responded on legal matters as part of their purview and and their work for the town.
Yes, my view on this, and having had a discussion with this at the Affordable Housing Trust, is that this RFP has been out going on almost three years without us making a decision. What is proposed is 35 units, all rentals, affordable, which is in line with the charge of the land. And I think since we've gone through the RFP process, it does behoove us to finally make this decision.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, this is why I wanted to hear
Go ahead.
This is why I wanted to hear from you, Rich, as to what would be our reason to not make this decision tonight?
Three words. So a little bit of history.
Well, there's more than three words.
Poor of Milton. So for most of my life, at least since the animal shelter went up there in the eight, for most of my life, this, it was his woodland. And he left it to the selectman of Milton for the poor of Milton. To be honest, in the 50 years, maybe even more than that, I don't even know how old those structures are. It was just rental for town employees. It was never, and the amount of money in the trust was minimal. And prior select boards, they just weren't in the, we didn't have the money and they weren't really in the philanthropic business. In 20, full disclosure, in 2009, they just, the town, the select board, long before I even dreamt of being here, put out two, two RFPs for, no, a big RFP for 34 acres, I believe it was 34 acres of of the land, the biggest pot.
Yeah.
Yes, 38 total, I think, and they put out 34, whatever, whatever, it left four. The high bidder was Pulte Homes at $5 million. The select board picked that and I get that it was the, if the other one was a three something million, but it preserved the land. It wouldn't have, it was, it was, it gave you like $3 million or $2.75, but the land would be untouched. It would remain pristine. So the select board picked it and the AG approved, the AG came in, the, because this is anything that, this, this is not how this is. This is going to go to the Attorney General's office. The AG approved it and part of the reason that they approved it was because the bulk of the money, which I think Pulte and the select board and the AG had to agree, Murphy Hesse negotiated that, and I kind of agree with it, instead of throwing the 5 million in a pot and let, you know, a board come in and spend all 5 million, that select boards can already spend the interest. And it was at that point that I saw that finally the two main benefactors that we fund annually, and you guys haven't been here yet, but you're going to see it because there's Mr. Zorgos and they're going to come here, which are the Milton Food Pantry and Milton Residents Fund. And I believe we give them almost all of it. I don't think we keep any of the, I think we spend almost the entire interest. In COVID, we doubled down, tripled down, we gave, you know, every, every poor person we could We gave you that every, every poor person we could fund, we did. In 2017, I was a brand new selectman, a member of the select board, and I was on the Affordable Housing Trust and I went to my first meeting. And there was a letter for me to sign. The other members of the Affordable Housing Trust had a letter asking this board for $2.5 million of the 5 million. And I almost signed it. And I think I called Anne Marie, it was a time, John Flynn called the AG and within 24 hours, the Attorney General, who was, I believe, Mara Healy, it was Mara Healy, absolutely not, and determined that affordable housing was not the poor of Milton. And that letter, and we didn't do that. I must, I'll be very honest with you. Mr. Zorg knows this. I'm a strong advocate for the poor of this community. I would spend every nickel that I had to put into these houses. These, there are people in this town who barely get by. Heat, food, I mean, food insecurity are real, real things. And when Normie Dolan and Pat come into this room and you listen to them, it's compelling. And in this town, when you ride around all day long, you won't see it and you won't know it. And you can't see through front doors and you won't know it. But they, I'm sure you know, the way I'm talking right now, that it exists. This proposal doesn't do anything for that. It doesn't. And I'll be really surprised if the Attorney General approves it. I get it's an affordable, it's, and it's only 5% are affordable. The rest can be, because markets, how you afford it. 50,000 a year for 10 years, they'll be screaming us worse than the Quarry Hills development that we did. I mean, what's value of $10,000 50 years from now? What is it? 500,000 to the, and then, and then another request from the Affordable Housing Trust? In my mind, in everything I've ever known about the poor of this community and the intention and every select board member I've ever sat with, and probably one of the ones who was so articulate and lived this so day to day was Melinda Collins, because that was her life. And if you know her, she's very soft spoken, very, but very bright and very hardworking. And she got it and she would make sure that we live by this. And as much as you may need, and I've supported every affordable housing project we've run since the God, yeah, except this one. This, this, and I sat all day today listening on housing issues on the hill and just this, Mr. Daly, does not meet that requirement. Because I know in the, what, the way you've been told, oh yeah, it's affordable housing is, and I've heard the comment, and they're right, because that is our mission. Our mission is to use every available dollar of the government and whatever we can take in. I mean, I said this to you a long time ago, when we had $5 million on the table. You're $2.5 million for one foundation, $2.5 million for another. And that was part of the delay, Mr. Daly. And we went to the AG's office, that would have put $2 million infused, $2 million in cash into the trust and $3 million built a brand new element shelter and refurbished those three homes with, with three affordable, uh, five affordable units. We didn't go for it. So now we're faced with 10,000 a year for 50 years? I just, there's a saying I learned when I was a young cop. If it doesn't look good and it doesn't taste good and it doesn't feel good, it's probably not right.
Well, for some of us.
I'm not just, I'm just talking myself. I'm just talking.
Well, you're talking to the whole town.
Yeah, but I'm like, I think you know why I'm speaking, why I'm aware I'm at.
I am, but I also.
I'm not denying, I'm not, I'm not. My nine years into this, the thing I've learned the most as a Governor Stotin trustee is fight for the poor of Milton. And that's how I believe.
So I'm going to take a couple of points of issue with your contentions there, Mr. Wells. So first, the $5 million, no one doubts that that money is, goes to extremely good purposes. Nobody's arguing that point. When that development was made, no thought was given to putting an affordable housing element into that.
It was, it was part of the RFP.
We have for years said no to projects and to our utter, I would say in some cases, just look at what's happening in East Milton with the Falcone development.
But it's being built.
The planning board shot down a 50 plus unit with parking because they didn't like the way that it looks. They thought it destroys the character of the town. Developer goes out, comes back with 90 units, no parking. That's what you get when you say no. When we talk about looking out for the poor of Milton, we don't just mean writing checks to the people who can't afford food. We're talking about a lot of people who aren't getting stretched to the limit in town in, in their ability to live here and their ability to stay here. A friend of mine just had to leave Milton because she was not able to afford to stay here anymore. And that is a situation that we see time and time again. And we're only going to continue to see that if we keep holding up these banners of this is the way that it worked for 50 years, this is the way that it's good. When this will was written, the poor of Milton meant something entirely different than it means today. Entirely different. It meant people who did not own land, who would not be considered residents. It meant it like indigence, transience, people that were passing through. It meant all manner of people and that we would now try to draw a line and say, when we say the poor of Milton, the only people that we're talking about is this subsection here, I think is folly. And I absolutely object to the false disinformation that's been spread on Facebook and other places about this process. If we sold that, how many, how many units are in the Pulte development? About 20?
I think it was 30.
30? 30 units in the, in the Pulte development. So 30 units in the Pulte development. I'm just going to break out my calculator because I, I, I'm sorry? 23, okay. Sorry, we have somebody in the audience who knows. 23 units. So we got $5 million for 23 units. Best case scenario of that existing land, maybe you get another two, three units on it. Let's call it three, but $5 million divided by 23 is about $217,000 per unit. A little over, I'll call it 218, just to be generous. $218,000 in, if it was put, you know, let's say there's three of those and it's put into an endowment that's, which is how the current one functions and spins off about 5%, which who knows how that's going to be. It's a, it's about $30,000 a year. Okay, so we're, we're screaming here about getting $10,000 a year, where we would be getting $30,000 a year if this was put into an endowment. So we're still getting affordable housing. We're benefiting a number of Milton residents with that affordable housing. Yes, can somebody who can afford that, would we, you and I think of them as a poor, shoeless pauper from the 18th century? No, but they certainly could use the help and they could certainly, with this housing market, use the place to live. So I just think, I think it's slanderous, the way that it's been talked about as, as some sort of a sop to development. We're talking about a proposal from a Milton resident who's not going to make a ton of money on this, who's building affordable housing so that we control, rather than have 40Bs foisted on us by outside development. And to turn this into some kind of a crusade or to say that we're out here destroying the character of Milton, that this is exactly what the land was given for, was for affordable housing. The Boston Globe did a story about this. It's outrageous how this has been dragged and dragged and dragged for years under your leadership too, Mr. Wells. And so to say, to sit here and say that we don't care about the poor of Milton because we're thinking about building affordable housing on a poor farm? I don't know how you get those words out of your mouth without, with a straight face. Cause I think that is ludicrous. And I think you should be ashamed of yourself for making those allegations. And to say that it doesn't smell right, to, to suggest that we're involved in some sort of duplicitous activity here, it's going to hurt the town. I think you should be ashamed of yourself. That is not, it's not what we're up to here. And I think if anybody is going to sit here and make those charges, they better have some facts behind them. It can't just be old stories about how you've been here for 40 years and this is what the poor people in Milton deal with. I appreciate everything you do for the poor. You know that. You drove my son, my son around in your van and he helped you out in Dorchester with, or in Roxbury with Feed My Kids. I, or not Feed My Kids, with my brother's keeper. I appreciate what you do, but when you turn around and you malign this board and you suggest that we're engaged in some, you said that it doesn't smell right. And we're going to do it. I'm sorry that you don't think it smells right. To me, to me, that suggests impropriety and it suggests that we're somehow working a deal here. And I strongly, strongly condemn those remarks. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say about this?
I have a question about process.
Yeah.
Mr. Milano, if we are to vote in approval of this RFP tonight, what are our next steps? There are probably more hurdles for negotiation, et cetera, to get to like a final, like there has to be like a financing package put together. There needs to be final agreement on number of units, et cetera. Can you walk the rest of us through like what we have in terms of initiation of a project? Like what do, A, what are we voting to approve just for, you know, to get that out on the table, to make it clear to everyone? And B, what are the next steps before like this is a real thing?
It's almost similar to the vote that was taken around Town Council where it's, it's to select a proposal and to enter into negotiations. The RFP contemplates basically two step process, which is first, a land disposition agreement that binds the two parties to say, this is the broad strokes of what we're going to agree to do as we work out the details of a lease agreement. So the first would be working towards a land disposition agreement that would touch on number of units, address some of the questions around infrastructure, clarify information around funding and financing and feasibility, financial feasibility of the applicant prior to any lease agreement between the trust and any applicant. So there is, the RFP contemplates two steps, two separate agreements and a negotiation throughout on that.
So there are still terms that we have to agree upon with the developer?
That's correct.
And it.
Yeah, so we could.
Like this theoretically, I mean, it's been two years. We, we don't even know if the numbers necessarily work out at this point.
That's correct.
So we have, we still have a little bit of a road to travel on this. We would be selecting our candidate to develop the site.
I think you have to go to the AG first with it.
Okay, yeah.
You're leaving.
That is, that is a good point and I should have mentioned, that is a component where
Yeah.
it's what they have, we have gone previously on multiple occasions, different members of the board, going back a number of years and overarching comment is come to us when you have a proposal to move forward to the next step in a serious way for them to actually render their opinion on whether they can approve it as a matter of course through public charities or whether they would think it would need to go through the court system to get relief from the restrictions of the trust. And that, that is where the discussion around poor Milton will, will focus.
Which is a major hurdle. And that's the only picture I was painting, was how hard this has been.
I think it would just would be helpful also to clarify and I, typically when we talk about affordable housing projects in Milton, we're, we're in the 40B mindset where they're predominantly market rate and 25% affordable. And typically that affordability is at 80% of AMI. This project was put out to bid or the RFP was crafted explicitly, changed those terms. So 50%, anybody that wanted to propose and respond to the RFP had to have 50% of the units be affordable. So not 25% under a normal 40B, but 50%. Both proposals, I believe, were both 100% affordable. The one from Milton Partnership for Community Reinvestment proposes 100% affordable units at 60% of AMI for the most part and several units at 30% of AMI. So it.
It's five, it's five at 30, and the other 30 at 60.
So I, I think typically we are thinking in the 40B world. This is a little bit different. So I just wanted to make sure we, that was a reminder.
And just if I may, as long as you're going through the statistics, we, it's illegal for the town to request something to be 100% for current residents of the town. And we've maxed out, I believe, on the percentage that we can request for preference for Milton residents.
Correct.
So to suggest that we would, we could somehow provide more residents with homes through this is false. So go ahead, Mr. Daly.
So I think connection and context important for this. So there is a space where if we go to the AG and say, this is, this is our next step for providing services and access to the poor is affordable units at the town farm with five at 30% and 30 at 60%, they may say, the AG could say no. The other piece, I think, is the context of what affordable means in Milton. Cause right now we have the units at the Ice House and they have not released their affordable lottery. We have numerous people that are reaching out either to the Affordable Housing Trust or people individually, Milton residents, who are waiting for that lottery to be released. To Member Wells's point.
Always is, every time.
So to say that the units would not go to Milton residents, I think is a wrong framing. There is a large chance that it will go to mostly people in Milton if it's available.
30% by law cannot.
Right, but 70% can, right? It's 24 units. 24 units at, at the town farm, more units at the Ice House. I think we are providing a great service to the folks that are currently here, even if it's in a rental space, given what rents are in Boston, what rents are in our surrounding areas. The number of people that have asked for their returning students and young families that need a space. The folks that can't find that second floor of the two family to rent as they begin their lives with their families. So in that context, I think it is important that we move forward with the project, that we go to the AG. And if we're rejected, then you know, perhaps we're back in another process. But we do, in my opinion, we are dragging our feet and moving forward with something where I think the intention in the RFP we set out was for the benefit of the poor. And we received those RFPs in the same spirit that we asked. And for this to have come back at 100% affordable in a rental space, which is not something that Milton has. I think this would be the first or only of its kind in the town. I think in our charge as the trustees, that this is the space that we should be comfortable. I will say a little bit to our discussion here to lower the temperature a little bit. This is how heated things get when we speak about housing and the availability for folks in that we all want to help and serve. But decisions have to be made.
Any further discussion on this?
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Wells.
So let's, if we're going to make statements to be factual, so we go to the Falcone project, the planning board did not reject it. The developer decided to walk away from, and they were very close. And you're right, it would have been a 58 unit with commercial and still people still say they want the commercial. But it is what it is. And I'm not going to show anger here. I'm not going to, I could easily, I don't think you want to see it.
I've seen it.
You don't want to see it tonight.
Okay.
You're pushing it, but you're not going to see it. I know I talk about 41 years and it's found hard to believe I do. You say I should be ashamed. First off, I don't go on Facebook and write anything, number one. Number two, I'm going to tell you this and listen to me very carefully. Since the day I was a rookie cop, since the day I first went to work for this community, everything I've ever done in my life has been for the protection of the residents. And you talk about your son, he saw it personally on Friday. I don't talk about it, I wouldn't even have mentioned, but I want to tell you about it. Every single thing I know about doing is protecting those in this community. I've lived through tragedies that you can't imagine. I've seen things happen in this town that most people could never imagine. I've watched cops that work for me walk around today and carry traumas with them that you couldn't imagine. I've gone in people's houses and listened to stories of, that you don't even know about. And you think I should be ashamed? I can tell you this, Mr. Zorg. Every day in my life, whether I wake up representing this town, whether representing this town on the hill where I never expected, or banning a veteran in this police department and the son of a policeman and the husband of a police officer and the father of a police officer and a friend to so many colleagues in this community, I am proud of that. And it doesn't make me happy to have to speak against something. But when I say I understand for the poor of Milton, that's what I mean. And that's who I will continue to fight for. And I will never be ashamed. I'm not perfect, I make mistakes.
And I will never be ashamed. I'm not perfect, I make mistakes, I am not the smartest person in this room, believe me. But I pay attention to the stories of each and every person that calls us, emails us, and walks through this door. And you know who I'm talking about when I talk about the poor of Milton. This isn't about, I've been in every, when I got here, there was no Ice House, no, and it wasn't me, I'm just one of the five, initially three and then no Ice House, no 7-Eleven, no Amor Road, no Brusher Road, no Falcone Project, no, none of those existed. They do today. And I'm happy for that, because the history that you talk about is because the work of so many is being erased. Life is friggin' hard, but I am never going to be ashamed. I am proud of this community and I'm proud of the people who live here and the people who work here who try to make this community, including your son, who came with me on Friday and went through a tough, tough delivery in a tough spot. And as I told you in your wife on Friday night, which I didn't expect to see you, he's one of a cadre of young men and women that come through this town to go on to be great leaders. So if you think I should be ashamed, I'm not, and I never will be.
So if I may
Thank you.
Specify, what you said was that this deal doesn't smell right.
It doesn't, to me it doesn't, because I know what
That to me is the problem. No one is doubting your service to this town, no one is doubting.
When you say I should be ashamed, he's going down the road, he shouldn't have gone down.
You should be ashamed of your implication that there was something nefarious about this process.
I didn't use the word nefarious.
You did not, but you said it didn't smell right.
I didn't, I said that, I mean it.
Maybe I'm pulling out the thesaurus when I shouldn't pull out the thesaurus, but
Let it go. Let's vote.
All right. Any other comments on this?
So, yes, you know
To go through the timeline?
Well, yeah, so so that question was was answered, but I, you know, listening to our our group dialogue here, I think, you know, what's what's standing out for me is um, you know, that there's a lot of understanding that there are a lot of folks in our town who are facing tough times, who are in need. And we are, um, you know, I think we're facing this as a society too. I think everybody agrees that we need to be doing more um as government to help people and to um you know, just making systemic challenges less systemic, right? And, you know, I'm I'm just hearing folks debate about, you know, a disagreement of what are the best ways to help people, right? And I think that, I think that that's fine, I think that that's healthy. I think we can just agree to disagree, right? For me, I see the housing issue as um the systemic driver of a lot of the inequality and the pain and what is constraining people's budgets. For me, putting my thumb on the scale to help in that piece is going to do more. Not to say that, you know, other aid isn't needed or isn't important or isn't as effective, but I think that a lot of people really need this right now. And I'm, I'm going to support moving along with the process to see what comes of it. It may or it may, the AG may say no. The deal may fall apart, we may not get what we need out of it. But for me, this is, this is, the housing piece really is important in town. And if, and if we don't try this, then we don't. You know, we we lose the opportunity to try on this site. And I really don't know, like, what else higher and best, better? I almost said bester. It's getting late. I don't, I don't really know what what higher and better can be done. So that's just, that's just my thinking on it.
Thank you, I think that's very, very well said. So just to clarify, what we're doing is if someone decides to make a motion to approve the RFP, the first step would be, and Mr. Milano, correct me if I'm wrong here, to send the RFP to the Attorney General's Office to see if it would meet their qualifications in terms of benefiting the poor of Milton. And then after that, we would be free to, if they agree to it, sort of in principle generally, we would be able to enter into negotiation with Milton Partnership for Community Reinvestment LLC. If we wanted to discuss number of units, infrastructure, anything like that.
I think the conversation with the Attorney General's Office would likely be fluid because if unit composition changes and affordability mix then changes, I think those are all factors that they'll need to keep in mind, so I would suggest
Letting them know that
They happen kind of on the same simultaneous path as a land disposition agreement is worked on. Negotiations commence for a land disposition agreement and connect with the Public Charities Division for a check-in and an update on where things stand.
Okay, thank you. So do I have a motion on this?
Yes, move to approve the town farm request for proposals by the Milton Partnership for Community Reinvestment LLC.
A second.
Seconded by Ms. Hegarty. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, that is approved then. Moving on to the discussion approval of meeting minutes. Mr. Milano, for the March 11th Governor Stoughton Trust, I don't think we can reach a quorum on that as we don't have anybody beyond Mr. Wells and myself who participated in it.
The trust may, the trustees may still accept the minutes as being accurate reflection of the of the meeting. They don't have to have necessarily attended, so they can either agree that Lynn captured the minutes correctly or or choose to watch the meeting in the next few weeks and we can approve it at the next agenda.
Do you guys want to agree that Lynn correctly got the got the minutes right for March 11th or watch a meeting from March 11th and then vote on it?
I can attest the minutes are accurate.
Okay. And then Mr. Wells wasn't here for the 30th meeting, so I will, for the sake of expediency, move to approve the meeting minutes dated March 11th, 2025.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wells. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Are you and I in this?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Sorry. And then for the meeting minutes dated June 30th, Mr. Wells was not present, but I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes dated June 30th, 2025. Seconded by Mr. Daly. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Mr. Wells is abstaining, okay. Without further business for the trustees, I adjourn the meeting of the Governor Stoughton trustees.
You still need a motion for that.
Oh, I will, I would, sorry, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting of the Governor Stoughton trustees and return to the select board. Seconded by Mr. Wells. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now I return us from recess on the select board, we are now back to the select board. Discussion approval water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2026. Yes. Mr. Milano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have on the, on Zoom both DBW Director Marina Fernandez and Todd Prokop from Wood and Karen, who's our consultant that assisted us. In the interest of time, I'll provide an overview and if any questions or additional information needed, we can call on them if necessary. For fiscal '26, the water budget increased by about 6%. Some of that increase was offset by the use of some retained earnings. And enterprise fund world retained earnings are akin to free cash and the general fund budget world. Our water, our recommended water rate increases a 2% rate increase over the prior year based on our forecasted increase, slight increase in consumption over last year based on current year so far and the continued dry weather that we're seeing through irrigation season. So we're expecting a slight increase in consumption that will lend us to a 2% water rate increase. For a sewer enterprise fund, the budget is is pretty flat, it went up a half a percent over the year. However, we have seen continued declining consumption on the sewer side, it's gone down each of the past couple of years. And as a result, even though the budget stayed only up a half percent, we're recommending a 2.5% increase on the sewer rates. So combined, that's a, if you have both water and sewer, which most Milton residents do, it's about a 4.5% increase on the combined bill. And I'll just also just point out that I mentioned the water retained earnings, so we are, the water retained earnings, which is free cash, is about 40% of our budget. Recommended best practices for it to be about 20%. So water has brought in more revenue than anticipated in recent years and that has driven that free cash number, for lack of a better description, high and well over where we need to be. So we're willing to take on a little bit higher risk on the water side, knowing that we have significant reserves and more reserves than we probably, that we, than we need to have. The opposite is true on the sewer side. Last year, we had only 7% of the budget in retained earnings. That has increased now at the end of fiscal '25 to 15%. So sewer has been a little bit more riskier and if we have a very wet irrigation season, consumption plummets, our revenue will plummet, but our costs really don't change much year over year. So the risk is that we would draw down those retained earnings if we see a funky weather pattern. That's why that reserve ratio is so high at 20% in terms of the best practice. So that's kind of the Cliff Notes version where the water increase is a 2%, expecting a strong collection year on the water rates, sewer expecting consumption to continue to slightly decline, a sewer rate increase of 2.5% and a combined about a 4.5% increase over the prior year.
Questions from the members or discussion?
You want to motion, you'll wait till Mr. Daly comes in.
I think we can
I thought he had questions. Was he asking, he was asking.
He did have a question earlier, I believe.
Do you maybe, in the absence of Mr. Daly?
I'll make a motion on the purpose of discussion. I'll make a motion on the purpose of discussion to approve the water and sewer rates fiscal year 2026.
Okay, motion's been made by Mr. Wells.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Hegarty for the purposes of discussion, and I know that Mr. Daly has indicated had questions.
Want to keep going, we'll keep, we'll come back to it. I mean, you want to get through?
I guess we can
There's no motion, right on the town meeting stuff?
I can, there's no, just a quick update and then there'd be a motion and a vote on item nine for the election warrant.
Okay, well, there's, so there, but there's no update on the bylaws. I know that, well, here's Mr. Daly, so let's go back to water and sewer rates. I think, Mr. Daly, you had a question about the water and sewer rates.
I made a motion and seconded, but I know you had questions, so we don't want to vote till you were here.
No, my only question was answered, I just asked, I wanted to see the the expected growth of consumption over time with the
Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, approved unanimously. Mr. Milano, any updates for us on the warrant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Warrant committee continues to do their work there. Night two of a warrant committee summit tonight, I was there last night with, select board chair was with us as well as the time moderator, talking about the warrant committee responsibilities and process. The, just a couple of quick updates, the master plan implementation committee is discussing the warrant article they submitted tomorrow night with some suggestions and feedback from the warrant committee, so there might be some tweaks as to what that final look, version looks like. And likewise, the climate action planning committee is working with the warrant committee to maybe a couple tweaks to the article as well as the recommendation. So no immediate updates this evening, but we'll have final versions of all those that will go, that will be approved by the select board for the printing of the warrant at our next meeting on September 24th.
And I, I'm anticipating that there may be a change or two to light trespass. I've been informed that the warrant committee wants to chat with me about that article and I'm waiting to find the time for them. So those, but those, I think other than those three, I think everything else is pretty much in stone at this point.
And they have already voted to recommend a yes vote on Article Six, which is related to the Lance swap for the school, potential school project.
Great. Okay, so no action needed then from us. Item number nine, I think we just need a motion here, the November 4th special town election warrant.
Moved to Moved to approve the special town meeting election warrant dated November 4th, 2025.
Mr. Wells and seconded by Ms. Hegarty, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, discussion approval award bond anticipated notes dated September 4th, 2025 and authorize the select board and treasurer collector to execute required sale documentation. Mr. Milano?
I did just promote treasurer collector Joanna McCarthy, so she can give a brief rundown if she's able to, otherwise I can. And this is a lengthy vote, so
9:15?
As usual, it'll be quick. As usual, I'll display the vote on the screen when it comes time to take the motion. Joanna, if you want to give a quick overview of the results of this sale.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, awesome. Good evening all, we're just here to to get your approval on a issuance of one, or sorry, $8.7 million of bond anticipation notes with a one-year term. We got, we got a generally, a quite favorable rate with the winning bid coming in with a lowest NIC of 2.567. What that just means is that our overall interest or the, I should say, the interest due upon completion would be about $350,000, so generally a good rate favorable because of our, you know, recent affirmation of our S and P rating. And just to kind of hit the high level about what, what this 8.7 will fund or the reason why the uses of this, about 69% would be for fire station construction. I guess the other, the next big bucket would be for roads at about another million dollars. And then there's a bunch of kind of smaller capital items that are included in this issuance. And what this will do is bring us to, to kind of bridge the, the the financing until we do a larger issuance, more long-term next year at this time. Any specific questions?
No. Is there a motion here? Is there, is it page 11 the motion?
We're gonna have
That big vote.
Nick's gonna display it and then the motion I think is
That's what I'm holding, page 11.
Yes, yeah, but that's the whole motion. And the motion can be to, that the board will vote in accordance with the vote as it appears on the screen.
I'll make a motion that we approve. This vote is displayed on the screen and published on page 11 of our notes tonight.
A second.
Agenda notes.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our thanks, Ms. McCarthy, for staying up late for a very short meeting for you.
That was nice and easy, thank you guys.
You're very welcome.
Have a nice night.
Item 11, Milton Budget Coordination Committee report. I guess I might turn to you, Ms. Hegarty, yes?
Very quickly, Mr. Daly and I attended the first Milton Budget Coordination Committee meeting last Friday morning. It was a good first meeting of the committee. We have, we've discussed the charge at this meeting in the past, but we had members from the school committee, planning board, warrant committee, school superintendent Phelan present, I'm sure, town staff, I'm sure I'm forgetting folks, Leroy Walker, who's our our vice chair, I'm going to be serving as chair. This committee is going to take the year to try to provide like a higher level cross-government approach to having a conversation about about our finances for the long term and to try to provide a a platform to evaluate larger decisions in the context of longer-term financial issues for the town. So folks, folks seemed pretty excited about it, thought, you know, it was a good idea. We just spent a lot of time talking about the charge and answering questions and sharing thoughts and ideas. But, you know, we're, we're excited for what comes. But, you know, we're, we're excited for what comes. And I don't know if Mr. Daly, if I left anything out or.
No, I think that was, that was well, that was well-covered.
I'm trying to do it fast because it's late.
Yes.
Mr. Wells, any questions?
It's generally a good thing.
Well, I'm delighted that this committee is meeting. Glad to hear that you're chairing it and Mr. Walker is, is vice chair. I think this is a, a good step in the long process of getting us to the point where we have more transparency and a better understanding of the, of the budget process. So thank you for stepping up to that role, Mr. Daly, for your service on that committee as well. So if no further discussion, we can move to item twelve, transfer a portion of Pope's Pond parcel to the board.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the release for the purpose of discussion and get this out. Transfer of a portion of Pope's Pond parcel to the Board of Park Commissioners and a transfer of the remainder of the Pope's Pond parcel to the Conservation Commission.
Can I interrupt the motioning and seconding? Sorry, with land transfers, the language is very specific. So if the board will indulge me, let me pull that up. I should have interrupted you before.
There's a map, too.
So there's two separate transactions. The first is going, portion going to parks.
What page is this on?
I'm gonna pull it up on the screen just because it's, it's lengthy. Apologies. So there's a two-acre portion closest to Sumner Street and the Canton Ave that would encompass the portion going to parks. This is the motion here. And once the motion is, I can read the motion if somebody wants to then say so moved, so.
It's up on the screen, too.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. So same thing. So I'll say, I'll make a motion to, that the select board approve the land going to parks and recreation department as displayed on the screen, following the word motion the selects board hereby determines pursuant to Master and Law, chapter forty, section fifteen, eight, and the remainder of that paragraph.
Is that sufficient, Mr. Milano? Great. Do you want to second that?
I would like to second it.
Okay. Any discussion on this? I think this is a good idea. I'm glad to see it happening. So all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are approved.
There's a second vote.
The second half, oh, yeah, the second half, the second half. Let's do the second half.
And so now the balance of the Pope's Pond parcel will be, would be transferred to Conservation Commission as the board may recall. The land swap legislation and home rule petition carved out up to four acres for playground purposes on that parcel with the balance going to Conservation Commission. So with the same.
So I'll make a motion as displayed on the screen, following topic, select board vote regarding land going to Conservation Commission, beginning with the word motion, following paragraph, to the extent required under Master and Law, chapter forty-six, fifteen, eight, the select board hereby and the remainder of that paragraph is posted, quoting with the words acts of 2024. I should have done that before.
Motion's made. Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Milano, you have drafted for us for item thirteen, a letter to the MBTA regarding the Matapan Line Transformation Project. Would you like to give the folks at home a quick overview of the letter?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I apologize for just distributing it to the board this afternoon. I have drafted a letter that requests of the MBTA an update and status report on the Matapan Line Transformation Project. We have not received directly any information in terms of where that project stands. The last public meeting on the project was in June of 2023. At that meeting, the expectation was that fifteen percent design plans would be submitted in winter of 2324 and that there would actually be a fall, a fall 2023 public meeting. That never happened. In terms of my understanding, there's various portions of the project of different phases are slowly but surely moving through the procurement wheels, but I don't have any kind of an overall update or what that even means. And so as we, everyone knows, with the public discussion around the MBTA Communities Act, we think it's important to that the transformation project does get completed and followed through on if the town is, you know, complying with the law and relying upon that transit access for doing so.
Thoughts about the draft?
Do you copy the delegation on that?
Yes. Yes. I, my only suggestion on this, I thought it was well-written. I would add, I would like to suggest that we add the word strongly, so we are strongly concerned by the apparent lack of progress and by the lack of public announcements regarding the project. I don't know if anybody objects to that. I'm sure it's not a huge surprise as an amendment for myself. Any, any other edits or suggestions to this letter? I think it's a really, now that we are in compliance, we, I think we can and should be asking for some answers on this long-delayed renovation.
How about deeply concerned?
Deeply is fine for me. Thank you. That's why you're the town administrator.
And it does request an update and invites the MBTA to, to join one of our meetings to provide further updates.
It's definitely time for an update on this.
Yeah. I will take a motion on this.
I think I gotta abstain on this. I think I'm gonna abstain because I've been meeting directly with the advisory board on this issue. So I'm abstaining on that. They won't be surprised, so. Move to approve the letter to the MBTA regarding the Matapan Line Transformation Project.
I will second. Are you abstaining also?
Yeah.
I will distribute, I will submit the letter on behalf of the town of Milton.
Thank you.
I will request the select board vote to do so.
I'll make, I want you to submit it in the chair's name.
It's in the chair's name.
Yeah.
On behalf of the board, that's, I was wanting to abstain because I don't need to.
Yeah, I think it's the chair's name on behalf of the board.
I don't need to sign it. That's fine.
Yep, okay.
All right. Item fourteen, a discussion approval easement, location and abandonment agreement, two fifty-nine Central Ave. Mr. Milano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Attorney Ned Corcoran is on line up in case there are any questions, but this is pretty straightforward. There is a stormwater drain on this property. The developer is looking to construct a home there and has moved the town's infrastructure. And as a result of moving the town's infrastructure, what DPW's review wants to now move the easement location, so it's really relocating an existing easement. The work has been completed. They have submitted as-built plans. DPW has not had a chance to review and sign off on the work that's been done and to compare the as-built and to review the as-built, I should say. So I would recommend that the board approves the easement location abandonment agreement subject to approval by the DPW director.
Good question. I'll make that motion, but is this similar to Joe Kathleen?
No, this is, they, they did this, in order for the project to be more feasible, they wanted to move our infrastructure. They did it all on their entire own volition.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion's been made by Mr. Wells to approve the easement location and abandonment agreement for two fifty-nine Central Ave.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen, discussion update approval, Quarry Hills lease extension with the city of Quincy, House Bill thirty-eight ninety-seven. Mr. Milano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had discussed this at a previous meeting. I met with representatives from Quarry Hills last week. And, you know, they're willing to come to a select board meeting, provide an update, engage with the town. But I think further updates I would suggest that we take into executive session. There is an agenda item to go into executive session, discuss the value of real property. I'd suggest that the board do that in addition to that update.
All right, so we will abstain from any motion there. Sorry, Mr. Wells.
No, go ahead, go ahead. I just want to add one thing to.
That's all I was gonna say and move to the next item, but if there's further discussion on this.
So this is a copy of the, when the town initially agreed in 2005, it was a Quarry Hills Oversight Committee appointed by the select board. I real, and I met just briefly up in like a sidebar meeting with some of the Quincy delegation last night, the local delegation. And they were aware of this, like, and I've made this very clear, because in the hearings I've said them already, they make reference to a twenty-seven hole golf course, but no reference to the town of Milton in this massive upgrade. And I think it's a, now I can't remember if it's a fifty-year or an eighty-year extension that they want on the Quincy, they're eighteen holes, not ours. And I think, I don't want to get, I don't even know what's an executive session, but I think Mr. Milano may want to look at bringing this to us. We may want to, because I don't know anything about golf courses. And I don't think any of us here do, but I think.
Just know that I'm lousy on one.
I, I was not involved. This happened long before, but I've always known there was, and especially like John, there was always been like a sour taste that we kind of got the, the short end of that straw. And this is a chance, if they're looking to up their longevity of their operation, then we should look out for our nine acres as well. Because if we don't extend, perhaps, I'll wait till we get an executive session, our strategy.
Okay, so we'll move the rest of that to executive session. Item sixteen, discuss, I'm sorry if there was any other, did anybody else have anything to say about that? Sorry, okay. Item sixteen, discussion approval common victual or license for Milton Sushi, Inc. in business as Ichiro located at five thirty-eight A, Adams Street, Milton, Mass.
Move to approve the common eviction license for Milton Sushi, Inc., DBA, Ichiro located at five thirty-eight A, Adams Street, Milton, Mass.
Second.
So it's new management and.
Is that what it is?
New name for the sushi restaurant.
New ownership entity as well.
Okay, so congratulations to the new management. We love sushi.
Isn't that the same name?
I think it was.
It is the name, isn't it?
The, the ownership entity changed and the ownership, the ownership group involved has changed. So they needed to reissue the common vic.
But the name of the restaurant is still the same.
It's going to be just Ichiro.
Okay, or maybe it was like Ichiro Sushi before. Okay, all right.
Slight change.
It's not Ichiro Suzuki that's involved, is it?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, that would be awesome. Any discussion on sushi? I'll take a motion. Oh, wait, we had it?
I made the motion.
Someone seconded?
Yeah.
Seconded.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Oh, great. So then, discussion update.
Drink of water.
Okay. We're gonna do a discussion update Randolph Ave, Route twenty-eight, Road Diet Pilot, Road Diet Pilot. Mr. Milano?
They, Mast Dot has announced and put up video message boards that they will begin milling September fifteenth, next week. Work should start there, not necessarily for the road diet, but as all prep, as they start to repave the road. They did request, and I've been remiss to get to them, they wanted a, something in writing from the town reflecting its approval of the road diet, which was a consensus of the board the last meeting, so we'll provide that to them. We have some more follow-up. We've gotten some comments from residents that we've distributed to Mast Dot. We'll continue to chase them for follow-up and provide information, but the.
DCR, don't forget DCR.
Right. And DCR is talking about some changes to potentially to Chican Tabit, heading to Braintree, Quincy, so more potential changes in that area coming. But we'll, we'll follow up with information. If anybody has any further questions or comments or concerns, they can distribute to us and we'll follow up with Mast Dot from there.
Is it, because I know we've received, yeah, comments from a number of folks on this. Is it safe to assume that if they've sent in an email with a question? I know that, in particular, the U-turn at Reed's Dale is, is, is something that people are concerned about. Is that, that's been forwarded along as well?
Yes, if, I will note, though, if residents are sending emails to SB at town of Milton, I do not receive those. So if you receive those and somebody wants to forward them to me or just check with me that I have them, that's email direct to the select board without the town administrator, but don't assume that I have it if you notice it was just to yourselves.
You should probably get those, I would think.
Sometimes I don't know if that's, they're meant for me necessarily, so.
That's true.
Maybe all I'll do is I'll clarify on the website that emailing that address does not include me.
So, yeah, and I, I think I would just add for, for residents, this, you know, we've taken this very seriously. This is, as we've discussed, one of the most dangerous roads in the Commonwealth. We don't expect that this is going to be a perfect solution and we hope that people will, can, you know, give us and give the Commonwealth their thoughts and their feelings as this is put in place and, and also exercise some patience as we attempt to look at alternative solutions for what is right now really a death trap. So I, and, and we welcome emails in, on this or calls. Any further discussion on this?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Do we have any current plans or can we put plans in place to periodically meet with Mast Dot?
I think they're gonna come out.
They're gonna come out.
They're gonna come out.
All right. One question I would want to ask and see if we could discuss this with them is, we had the question about them tracking the traffic on twenty-eight, but.
The neighborhoods, they're gonna do it.
Even, even further past, just further out.
I, I had a meeting with Mr. Milano on Friday and that was when the, the DCR thing is the DCR. There's been some criminal activity this summer at night up on the top of the overlook. DCR wants to immediately enact a thirty-day shutdown completely of the road from Quincy Braintree line to us. And my, only because there's a, I said, you need to have conversation with Mast Dot because to me, the Mast Dot project's the priority here, like, we gotta, so.
The shutdown Chican Tabit altogether?
They talked thirty day with the potential of permanently and make it part of the park. They've wanted to do this, they used to do it on weekends all the time.
Yeah.
They've wanted to do this for a long time.
Okay.
Okay.
It's good to be aware of.
Thank you.
Item eighteen, select board policies and code of conduct. Mr. Milano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the packet I did distribute, based on some discussion in prior meetings, a, a draft code of conduct. I also included in the packet a number of alternatives from other communities. The draft I worked on is primarily based on the Wellesley Select Board's code of conduct. And it's, it's structured as a complement to their existing policy packet rather than to be in lieu of or to replace a policy packet. So it touches on a lot of similar themes that are touched on elsewhere in the select board policies, but kind of puts everything in a, in one central location in terms of how board members will interact with each other, with the public, with staff and administration. So it's just about four pages, so it is lengthy. It probably could benefit from some editing and tweaking, but as a first iteration, I felt more was probably better. But that is what I have drafted and put together in terms of a first step for feedback on a potential code of conduct.
So I might suggest, given the hour and given that we are going to be adding another member to this body in a couple of months, that we take this, take, thank Mr. Milano for his draft. Everyone can have a look at it. We may want to revisit it at some point, I'm guessing in October, with, with some suggestions and revisions. But I would like us to approve it once we have a new member on the board. I think that giving, giving whoever that new person is the opportunity to at least weigh in and hear the discussion on that would be appropriate. But I'm willing to take suggestions, the alter, the two alternatives to that.
Just defer, let's just defer until there's an additional member.
Well, I think, you know, given that it's a four-page document, we may want to take a look at it and take a pass at maybe some initial thoughts on it and then we can come back to it after the new member. Does that sound okay to folks?
Same.
Ms. Hagerty?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay. All right, so then, number nineteen, Mr. Milano, training for elected board members.
I don't have an update at this time. I'm waiting on a proposal to, to share with the board, to review, and hopefully keep moving that forward. No update at this time.
Number twenty, do we have the proclamation?
Childhood cancer, the witness month proclamation.
Oh, yep, Lynn probably has a hard copy.
Yeah, we have a hard copy to read. That would be great. Does anybody who hasn't had a proclamation recently that would like to?
Just kidding.
Just kidding.
Always thinking of.
Thank you.
I do, I try to be kind.
Mr. Wells?
So this is a proclamation, and I'll begin on behalf of the board. I'll begin, whereas childhood cancer remains an urgent health crisis and the most common cause of death by disease among children in the United States, and whereas the causes of childhood cancer are still largely unknown and the rates of common cancer differ by age and ethnicity, excuse me, underscoring the importance of furthering research to better understand and determine how to adjust treatment to the unique needs of children as well as the long-term. long-term health issues often faced by childhood cancer survivors. And whereas, according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, approximately 15,000 kids under the age of 20 are diagnosed with cancer in the United States each year. And whereas Massachusetts is home to the renowned cancer care, doctors, nurses and researchers work every day to advance treatment options and offer hope to families, while organizations across the Commonwealth provide vital support and advocacy on behalf of children fighting cancer. And whereas, symbolized by the color gold, childhood cancer awareness month provides our community with the opportunity to stand united with the young heroes who face the disease with incredible courage to celebrate survivors, to support families currently in the fight, and to honor those who have lost too soon, especially Michael C. McHugh and Emily I. Butt. Now therefore, we, the Milton Select Board, do hereby proclaim September 2025, this is Milton Gold's Gold in recognition of childhood cancer awareness month, given this day, Tuesday, September 9th, 2025. Signed by the Chair on behalf of the Milton Select Board, Benjamin D. Zoll, Chair, Winston A. Daly, Vice Chair, Megan F. E. Hagerty, sorry, my eyes are going, it's E. Hagerty, Secretary, Richard G. Wells, Jr., Member. Thank you, Mr. Zoll.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
That was a motion.
That was a motion. But that was a whole motion. Would anybody like to second?
Second.
Okay, I'll say Ms. Hagerdy seconded that. I would only add that if this is an important subject to you, please contact your federal representatives and senators and ask them to restore the funding that has been cut viciously by the White House to childhood cancer and other diseases. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Then we have 21, application from Baociu of the Milton Asian American Pacific Islanders AAPI Neighbors Group.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the application from Baociu of the Milton Asian American Pacific Islanders, I'm sorry, excuse me, AAPI Neighbors Group to use the Town Green and Baron Hugo gazebo on Sunday, October 4th, 2025, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM for the Mid-Autumn Moon Festival.
Second. 中秋节, I will say happy Mid-Autumn Moon Festival to everyone. 中秋节快乐, I should say. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We wanna run through these appointments. Mr. Wells?
Where are we? Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the following boards and committee reappointments. Open Space and Recreation Committee, Mark Boyle, Kristen Downey, Becky Simmons.
And Meredith Hall.
Her name's not on my, are we?
No, the planning board is meeting on Thursday.
Oh, okay, she, her name was on mine, then, sorry.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay, no.
Sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to appoint the following individuals to Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee for a one-year, one-year term, Mark Boyle, Kristen Downey, Becky Simmons, and Meredith Hall. Oh, that's about, okay, sorry.
Oh, that's the, okay, all right, that's where I was confused, okay.
Carolyn Cahill.
All right, so I'll move to appoint Carolyn Cahill to the Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee for a one-year term.
Second.
Seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll move to appoint Thato Movosa to the Milton Cultural Council for a three-year term. Did we just did that? Did we just do that one?
Nope.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll move to appoint Colleen Olson to the Payment in lieu of Taxes Committee for a one-year term.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Six, seven, okay. I'll move to appoint Anna, did I get that? I'll move to appoint Anna Morgan Basami into the Climate Action Planning Committee for, as an associate member for a one-year term.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Moved to appoint Jay Hale Smith to the Climate Action Committee, Planning Committee as an associate member for a one-year term.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. All in favor?
Aye.
Move, oh, I don't know who this is gonna be.
This is one of us, isn't it?
Yeah. The OPEB Trust is, per our OPEB Trust agreement, we do have an OPEB Trust Board. The trustees have not met in some number of years, so now that we have an OPEB valuation, we'd like to have the trustees meet. The select board chair serves on the trustee unless the board points and doesn't meet in their place, so the chair is currently on it unless the select board like to put somebody else in.
Anybody else, anybody else want the job?
The chair it is.
All right. And just Ms., Ms. Russell, I think, thought she was being appointed to the Tree Shade Committee?
She did, yeah, she said that tonight. She didn't say that.
It was done already, right?
Oh, she's already on it.
Prior meeting.
Okay, well, there, there we go.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure we weren't missing anybody.
Ms. Russell, if you're still watching, you were appointed at a prior meeting.
You're already there, you're there. Then I will take motions on the meeting minutes. I'll, I'll make these for sake of expediency. Move to approve the meeting minutes dated July 8th, 2025. Mr. Wells was absent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the meeting minutes dated July 22nd, 2025, Interview with Harrington Heap LLP.
Second.
Mr. Daly is absent. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the meeting minutes dated July 22nd, 2025.
Second.
Seconded by, by Mr. Wells. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the meeting minutes dated July 30th, 2025. Ms. Hagerty absent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
Didn't you end up coming to that late? Was that the interview?
I don't think that was the one.
That was a different one.
That was Murphy Hesse.
Town Administrators Report. Mr. Milano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick items. Our fall paving is underway on Thompson, Windsor and Lantern Lanes, Elliot Street, Willoughby and Curtis Road. Soleruso is the contractor doing that work. They'll be out, they were milling this week, expect to be back to pave starting Thursday and probably go into next week. East Milton 40B is approaching the time where they're gonna need to tie into infrastructure located on, in and under Franklin Street and in and under Basset Street, so we're working to work with the contractors to mitigate what will be inevitably some road closures and impacts, because there's no way to avoid them needing to connect to water and sewer and other infrastructure located on those streets. So we have an initial plan from them and will be working with DPW and others to work that out and keep folks informed of those impacts. Working on some dates, the East Milton Fire Station, RFP discussion in East Milton in mid-October. Select Board Retreat is confirmed for October 5th at noon. I did confirm with Jeff Nutting, who will be available to help facilitate that meeting. He'll be requesting or I'll be distributing on his behalf a questionnaire to the members to help get some work done ahead of that, so he can come in and just dive right in. I was unable to attend the Chamber event on Friday. Just wanna, just note with appreciation those who helped pull that together. Porch Fest is coming up in a couple of weeks. And lastly, on the staffing front, we're excited to announce that Liz Manning will be beginning on October 1st as the new Planning Director for the town after a lengthy absence in that role. She comes to us from Braintree where she's currently the Community Preservation Manager, previously worked for a long time for the City of Quincy in their planning department as a senior planner among other roles. So deep experience in the planning front and her most recent current professional experiences on community preservation, and as we've gotten that underway, both sides of that experience are going to be helpful to us. So excited to have her on board and I know the Planning Board Chair will make a similar announcement at the Planning Board meeting on Thursday night, but we have the Assistant Director position posted, we have applications in and we're coordinating some interviews with, with her, with Liz rather, in the intervening time period. So trying to keep things moving to get that office back up to full staffing. So that is my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, just to add.
Okay, you go first, I just wanna give him two things, go ahead.
Was it a question from Mr. Milano?
Two points for the East Milton. One is with regard to East Milton Project, Abbey and Navarro looking to reinstitute valet, we need to get them before the Traffic Commission. He grabbed me today, he's very concerned, because this is really, if, if you're going by, this project's like in full swing. And the second thing is on the, with regard to, I'll leave, I'm not gonna get into the event for Thursday, but the security bulge that we've talked about, we gotta get them permanently installed on that deck. We've got to do that.
We use temporary ones for Friday, because they're not, they were supposed to be here, but they're in, they're coming in this week.
On one side.
They should be on both.
Oh, one side.
They were moving trucks onto the deck to.
And then the truck had to leave, and so it was, you gotta put them like.
The planters will be on all sides, the permanent ones, and they'll be here. So I apologize for that oversight, but they are coming, we believe delivery is scheduled for this week and then we'll have them installed thereafter. And those will be permanent fixtures, not event by event.
Okay, any, any other questions for Mr. Milano? On the Chair's report, just to echo Mr. Milano's thanks to those who helped the MAC and the Chamber of Commerce in particular for the great event on the deck, I believe Mr. Wells had his hand in having some matter on deck chairs out there.
That's an easy thing, though.
Which was, which were appreciated very much, was a great event and thanks to everybody who came out for it. And to echo again, Mr. Milano, the 20th is Porch Fest, starting at noon, and I believe the band assignments just went out today because I got mine, so stay tuned to figure out where, where to catch Milton's finest music and then also people like me. We have, I, I do wanna say I've gotten a number of questions about the recent ICE activity in the greater Boston area, and I'm asking LOOSE, which is an organization that coordinates responses to ICE, to come and present to the select board at a future date. I think we should all be extremely concerned with the activity that's taking place nationally and locally in that space. And I don't have anything else, I don't believe, on, from my report. Public comment response, I think we pretty much got everybody. We either talked about their questions or we talked about the issues specifically. Anything else that anyone had on the public comment response? Okay. So, future meeting dates, please note, our next meeting is Wednesday, September 2020, September 24th, because of the Russian holiday on the 23rd, tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, October 7th, I believe. I don't believe that the 14th worked for folks, so I think that one was off and tentatively October 21st. And then our special town meeting dates are scheduled Monday, October 27th, 2025, Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, and Wednesday, October 29th, 2025. We will take betting odds on how many days we will be meeting. Future agenda items, Mr. Wells just mentioned a couple, anybody else have, and I mentioned the LOOSE introduction.